Good evening, everyone. This is Lori Charlton, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 1st, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Finance, held via WebEx. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder for members of the public, you are encouraged to send comments during or after the meeting to the following email, BOF@fairfieldct.org. Please remember to include your name and address in your email. For members of the public who've called in to listen or joined the WebEx via your computer, please know that you are muted and you will not be heard by the board members, and there will be no live public comment until called for by the chair during the meeting. At that time, any member of the public who wishes to provide public comment that's pertinent to tonight's agenda will be given an opportunity to do so and provided instructions on how you can be heard. Our agenda tonight consists of a number of discussion items. First, we'll be hearing a presentation from the town's independent auditors, PKF O'Connor-Davies, relating to key highlights from the town's audit and the audited financial statements for the most recent fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. Next, we'll be hearing a presentation from Phoenix Advisors on the town's financial position and the benchmarking of key financial metrics as compared to other AAA-rated municipalities. We'll then hear an update from the town's chief fiscal officer on our bonding process, the status of our bonding as compared to the waterfall for the current fiscal year, and an analysis of our expected bonding for next year. We then have an internal discussion among our board members on the topic of financing paving costs in the future. This is a follow-up discussion that was requested by board members after our recent capital planning workshop. And we will also hear updates from subcommittees as applicable, our town attorney, and other communications. Our only voting item tonight is the approval of minutes. I do want to just make note of the status of one other follow-up item from our recent capital planning workshop. We had discussed having a presentation on the Townwide Facilities Plan that was recently undertaken with a focus on how the recommended projects in that plan tie into our planned future capital spending and to what extent the proposed projects would be eligible for bonding. That's not on tonight's agenda because the facilities plan is apparently still in draft form and awaiting finalization. We will plan to have a presentation of that report when the final version's available, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss before bond authorizations for any spending derived from that plan come before us. So stay tuned for that. Any questions before we move on? Mr. Walsh.
Madam Chairwoman, you know, as I've been thinking about this going forward, I just want us to think about something. We often have specialists, contractors, professionals that the town hires to be present at our meetings. And oftentimes, they're charging by the hour. Maybe some are, maybe some aren't. But it would appear to me we are wasting hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxpayers' money across all the boards and commissions by not taking those matters up first. And those matters should be brought up before boards, regardless of what the agenda is, to try to save the taxpayer. What I would imagine would be hundreds of thousands of ballots. And I think before each agenda item in the future, if you could find out for that meeting's participants whether someone's charging by the hour and what their hourly charge is, so that we can see whether we want to move something up as opposed to keeping someone here for three, sometimes budget seasons, four hours, at sometimes hundreds of thousands? No, not sometimes hundreds of dollars an hour. But on environmental attorneys, it can be over $1,000 because I've hired them. It could be $1,600 an hour. So I'm not sure whether, like Mr. Spurndell, Mr. Centifanti, I'm not sure how all these people bill, but, you know, maybe it would be a good night to start that process so that we can start saving the taxpayers some money.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Yeah, I'd be happy to ask Mr. Schmidt for some help in getting that information. I will note that our two outside presenters tonight are both first on our agenda, but I hear you and appreciate your comment. Mr. Testani?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I was just going to, if that was a motion, I was but it's not a motion, so I don't need to second it. But it's good that they're first on the agenda. I just wanted to, you know, sort of dovetail off Mr. Walsh's point in terms of having
Well, the attorneys are also part of this process. I see Mr. Baldwin here. I'm sure he charges by the hour, just like the two previous town attorneys had done as well. So to the extent we can get people out of here and on, I would suggest we move them up in the agenda. Otherwise, people have a tendency to stay here the entire night and bill for five hours, where sometimes we need them for 15 minutes.
And if that needs to be a motion, as I was saying, Madam Chairwoman, I'll second it.
Okay, no, I don't think, thank you, Mr. Testani. I don't think it needs to be a motion. I think it's just a matter of how we plan the agenda, and I appreciate the comments and absolutely agree. I think, you know, having our outside specialists or professionals join us virtually is probably also helpful in that regard, so they don't have to travel and sit during meetings. And we can talk more about all of that later, but I think these are all good points and appreciate you raising them. All right. So with that, we will move to item three, which is to hear a review of the town's annual comprehensive financial report and state single audit for the year ending June 30th, 2021, presented by the town's independent auditor, PKF O'Connor-Davies, LLP. Mr. Joseph Centifanti, the audit partner who manages the town of Fairfield's account, is representing his firm this evening for the board. And for members of the public, I want to note that the backup documents for this discussion include the financial statements and other written communications that start on page one of the posted backup materials. And Mr. Centifanti's presentation of the financial statements begins on page 173. So, Mr. Centifanti, welcome. Thank you for being here, and I will turn this over to you.
Okay, I'm going to use that document that was just referenced to kind of walk through some of the highlights and point out some significant items in the reports, and then be happy to answer any questions either along the way or at the end. So just a couple of highlights. Things are a little bit different. The name on the cover of the report is different due to a GFOA policy. It's now the annual comprehensive financial report. Kind of a minor change. A bigger change is the audit this year includes the parking authority financial statements as an enterprise fund. And we'll look at that in a little bit more detail. And the federal single audit was not completed with the rest of the audit, and the reason for that was the compliance supplement and the final regulations related to ARPA, the ARPA grant, were not issued to mid-December. So that filing deadline is normally March 31st. It's been extended to September 30th. We will get, we will hope to complete the federal single audit in the next 30 days. We will not need to wait till September to do that. As you talked about, the ARPA revenue was recognized, the $12,415. So that was based upon the revenue loss calculation. And one of the items that came out of the final regulations was that every community gets a $10 million exemption for revenue loss. You don't have to do a calculation. So the town is a little bit over that, so you would have needed, you could have taken up to $10 million without doing a calculation and for the other $2 million. But this was already kind of done, and the regulations were issued in mid-December. There's environmental liability has increased from last year, and we'll look at that as, in the financials, as a long-term liability. The number is at $19 million, $37,000. So we'll talk about the reports, the financial statements, and then the state's single audit. So as far as the financial statements, the opinion on the financial statements is the unmodified or clean opinion, which is what the objective is. The management discussion analysis, again, that is a good executive summary of the financial operations of the town. During the year, it talks about significant changes and significant events, such as the budgetary highlights for the general fund are discussed, what your budgetary fund balance is, which it did increase by $1,616, which is different than the GAAP fund balance that we'll talk about. The cap project fund had negative operating results of $706,000. Cap project funds, just due to the timing of financing, so, which is what drives that. So the timing of the bonding as compared to spending. So that's not something that is of any concern. Also talks about specific capital asset additions by category, construction progress, improvements, vehicles, major items purchased during the year. It also talks about long-term debt. So the net increase in the town's long-term debt was to $2,651. So general fund financials, exhibit C and D. That's in pages 26 and 28. So your unassigned fund balance was $36,572, which is 11.34% of budgetary expenditures and transfers out. The prior year was 11.05%, so a slight increase from the prior year. It did include Schedule A in here, which is a graph of both your budgetary fund balance and your total fund balance. And as in prior years, the town has continued to have a nice trend upward as far as the level of fund balance as reflected by the percentage increase. So this is definitely a good trend. Reading agencies like to see the positive operations. But that change in fund balance on a GAAP basis was $696,000. So as compared to the $1.6 million, the difference is the timing of encumbrances as compared to prior year, current year. And the other factor for this year was the non-lapsing fund, that $3.6 million, which was spent, was put away in 2020, and it was spent during fiscal '21. So looking at general fund on the budgetary basis, so that's RSI 1A and 1B. The revenues and other financial sources were under budget by a net of $107,000. This town did have positive operations of basically $69,000, and $176,000 was appropriation of fund balance. So significant variances were property taxes were above budget by $428,000. You know, governmental was in excess of budget of $559,000. Charges with services were in excess of the $398,000. Most of that coming with building permits and town conveyance taxes, which was pretty consistent across most of all the governments due to people being home and a lot of the activity, especially in Fairfield County, as far as the real estate transactions generating a lot of revenue. And then the big offset to that was your investment income, and that was a combination of being under budget and some decrease in fair value for some of the town's investments. On page 98, expenditures were under budget by $1.7 million. I mean, excuse me, in general, was under by 230, led by benefits of $69,000. Finance department was under $479,000. The finance section, finance department was under $143,000, and the successor was under budget by $114,000. Public Works was under budget by $195,000, and most of that was, 106 of it was administration. Public Safety should be health and welfare. That was under $300,000, 160 of that being from human services. As I talked about, the non-lapsing fund was fully spent, and so that fund is closed as of June 30. So Parking Authority, again, these are the enterprise funds are on the same page as previously the Internal Service Funds. So revenues were $693,000. The prior year, they were $1,023,000. And the net decrease in that position was $200,000 last year. And obviously, that's due to COVID driving a number of parkers down. Internal Service Fund, the net increase in that position was $1,565,000. Last year was $3.5 million. Again, this is just a reversal. If you look at Exhibit B, it shows kind of a six-year trend. Really, what the driver was, your claims were up $2.2 million, which was kind of expected because during COVID last year, you didn't go to the doctor. So it's kind of returned to a more normal level, but still lower than 2019. So basically, that's the major difference as far as increase in that position. But in that position, again, you still have positive operations, and you're almost at $6 million in that fund, which, again, is a good amount, and it radiates to be, again, happy to see, you know, the positive fund balance. And towns work hard to get it there because it was negative for many years. Footnotes. On page 47, forty-eight's investments. So last year, we added the schedule to detail it by funds, so to tie the footnote in. So it did include that again this year. So basically, it shows the investments by the specific funds that they're in, and it does include restricted investments. So for general fund, you know, the governmental funds, if you try to tie that to the financials, you would have to add both the investment line and the restricted investment line to get the totals. So it shows you the type of instruments that you're investing in as well as which fund carries which investments. All right, pension and OPEB. Again, it's kind of going to be a consistent theme here. The employee pension plan is ended the year at 96.36% funded.
Madam Chairman, can Mr. Centifanti just get me to his page right now on the OPEB?
I'm on page 100.
Oh, the ACFR, right?
Yes, page 100, yeah, that's one. I'm actually looking at the RSI, which has the details on page 100.
Got it, thank you.
Again, the employee pension plan now is 96.36% funded. Last year was 78.44%. You had an increase in that position, almost $47 million. Your increase in fair value for the year was $58 million. And the rate of return was 29.54% for that fund. So hopefully, that the change in fair value holds, and if it continues on, then the town would be 100% funded with that plan. And it's similar for the police and fire plan, which is about 2% more funded. But again, the same reason, the strong market, the increase in fair value has kind of driven that. Again, with almost 30% return for that fund. On page 108 is the RSI for OPEB. So OPEB also had the fair value increase, and you went from a 41% funding to almost a 55% funding level. Again, the rate of return there was 31.14%. For the employee plan and for the police plan, it went from 36% up to the 40, almost 46%. Again, based upon fair value, again, almost a 30% return. So again, hopefully, all that fair value that the market holds and those increases then will save the town some money in the future for contributions and those type of things. Education plan is not funded, it's pay-as-you-go. It's mostly implicit rate subsidy. But I did see a decrease in the liability of $1.9 million. And basically, that was the difference between the expected and actual experience of about $3.2 million if you're looking at, again, the RSI on page 104. Some additional analysis that has been trending just the last couple of years, so on Exhibits D through F. So a lot of these numbers are numbers that we already talked about, so I'm just going to focus on the benefits number. So your benefit number for the employee retirement plan went up $5.6 million as compared to prior year. For the, similar for the police and fire, the benefits went up $7,166,000. So that's also impacting, you know, the funded ratio is, are those increases? As you could see, that you were at 10, 11, 12. 12 again, and there was a big increase for this year. For the OPEB plan, for the employees, the benefits actually decreased $841,000 for the employee plan. So again, that could be some of the timing from COVID, that type of thing. So I don't know, would expect to see the decrease, but it decreased by $841,000. And for the police and fire, the benefits actually went up to $472,000. So then the last page there, Exhibit F, is just an eight-year average, just kind of running where what your rate of return has been over the last eight years, comparing it to your discount rate. And you have basically a 2% to 4% better return than the discount rate that's used, except for police and fire. You know, that one's about right on as far as over that five-year, police and fire OPEB five-year period. State single audit, we had our unmodified opinion on compliance, no findings of questioned costs. The total state grant expended were $11,360,000. We did test three programs, pilot program, the LoSiP program, and the Taurine Road program. And those get rotated each year based upon a risk assessment. I think we did provide the communication of charge of governance. It talks about that we do audit and review estimates. Ex closures are clear and neutral, and that we are independent of the town. As far as what's coming up for next year, you know, GAZB 87, the lease accounting will be effective. I know it's been postponed in the private sector, but GAZB postponed it to one year from last year, but it will be effective this year. Again, and this is where all leases will be conceptually capital leases, asset right-to-use liability for that, what you have to pay for that right-to-use. In federal single audit, the ARPA grants, the regulations came out that that money will be audited or included in federal single audit as the money is spent. So although you recognize the revenue as for revenue loss this year, it will show up in the federal single audit as you spend the money going forward. Those were the highlights. Be happy to answer any questions.
Sure, I can turn it over to the board. Do you plan on walking through any of these other schedules here? Or do you just want to address those for Q and A?
Well, I did kind of walk through them.
Just based on your comments, so we won't go through these page by page then?
Right.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that, Mr. Centifanti. Questions from the board? Mr. Walsh?
Beaming, Mr. Centifanti. Thanks for being here.
Did you charge for being here tonight?
No, it's included in the whole lot of price.
Great. Question, you brought up the loss in OPEB by $800,000, and you weren't exactly sure what the reason was. Mr. Schmidt, do you know what the reason was why we're down in OPEB? By $800,000?
I'm sorry, why we're down in OPEB?
Yes, why the investment fell, right?
Well, that was the benefits that were down.
Right.
So the investments were up quite a bit from the 41.
So what was down, Joe, the $800,000?
That was the actually benefit amount. You know, how much you paid for claims was down $841,000, which just wasn't the expected trend. But so, good experiences, sometimes it's just timing, good luck. But, you know, all your other costs went up, but for that particular plan, it went down by the $841,000.
Believe that was because less people during COVID were using their health plans because they did not want to go see doctors, or doctors' offices weren't open, and all that stuff?
It, yeah, it could be related to that, or the workers, it could have been savings in workers' comp because you, you're, oh, for OPEB, yeah. So it had to be, yeah, somehow you retirees were just not going to the doctor as much.
Said you didn't see that on the police and fire?
Oh, police and fire had the increase of $472,000, again, which is on Exhibit Schedule E.
They actually, they actually increased their benefit usage?
Police and fire increased, yes.
First one, regards to the town employees, showed that it was going down and probably because they weren't using their doctors. I question how the police and fire were getting in to see the same doctors. And everybody was home, like on the fire. So, you know, there wasn't as many calls, I don't think, for fires, but everyone was home at their houses. Majority of the town. Okay, we have no answer to that.
Mr. Schmidt, do you have any insight?
I don't have any, no, we'd have to do some more research to find out, get the answers to that, why there's a difference between the
That'd be great. I just want to try to identify what the reason why one went up and one went down.
Okay.
Okay, maybe you could respond supplementally to the board on that, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Centifanti, I know there's a category, and I was kind of looking for it. I just forgot the name of it, where we have employees who earn benefits and like earn comp time and things like that, and we have to account for that, correct?
Correct.
Where's that number? And what amount is it, and has it gone up or down?
That number would be on page 58, called compensated absences. And the number
Compensated absences.
Went down $150,000 as compared to prior year.
That means that money was paid out?
That, that's kind of more indirect because it's just using your vacation. You just get paid for your vacation, so it reduces your balance. So it's not an additional payment. There may be some reduction if someone retired and was entitled to something, but that number more moves just based upon what your balance is, what your sick-time balance is, if any, your vacation balance, what those balances are. So if people use more vacation, then the liability may go down because, you know, salaries go up. So that's just the product of that. But there's no additional payment outside of retirement?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Walsh, to your point, or maybe Mr. Schmidt can answer this. Didn't we pay out some of that? Wasn't that part of the VERIP calculation that when those employees retired early, that there was going to be some of that compensated absences liability that became payable? I don't remember the amount, but that may have been part of it.
We paid out for vacation time?
Yep. Do you remember how much?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay, yeah, so it it may have been a mixture of paying out some of that vacation time and then I think as Mr. Centefanti said, it's it's just a function of how much unused vacation people have. So the more unused vacation there is, the more would be that liability would be because that would ultimately be payable to them when when they terminate their employment, if I've got that right.
Yep, that's correct.
Did you have additional questions, Mr. Walsh?
Yes, I do, so Mr. Schmidt or or Mr. Centefanti, I'm not sure who's in charge of this, but are we going to get a hardcover of this, not just the electronic version? Because we've we've gotten them for every year, I thought. They'd be mailed to our house.
We have them, we have them in the finance department.
Did we get them?
Sure.
The question was when?
Oh, did you say when?
Yeah, when.
Uh, we'll get them out to you tomorrow, or we'll try to get them out tomorrow or the next day?
There there's no rush, I'm just trying to figure out when when approximately, I mean, I don't I don't need it mailed out tomorrow. So if you guys have other things to do, I'm not trying to say that I emergency need it because tonight's the meeting, so, but I'd like to just have it because it's a good reference point on sometimes I'm going back on things.
Sure, it's also, it's online as well, and and if you were, if you're in the office, feel free to stop by too, if you're if you're ever ever stopping by.
Okay, Mr. Matola, did you have a question? John, did you have a question? You're muted.
No, I'm sorry. I I was kind of making a motion because I couldn't hear Jim Walsh anymore, he, something was going on with his sound, so.
Oh, okay. No, that's okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, were you, did you have another question you were trying to ask?
No, I was just telling you that I'm done with my questions.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, I I actually did not hear that.
No problem.
All right, other other questions from the board? For Mr. Centefanti?
I'm just gonna, yeah, just a a few minor things. You know, I know the 7% discount rate assumption is usually kind of borderline play. You see something very similar in the corporate world, usually usually a little higher. Is there any discussion among municipal accountants about whether that 7% is still appropriate? And, you know, how how does it continue to be justified? And then I guess the last part of that would be after a year where the assets went up, call it 30%, is there some prudence to at least temporarily lowering the discount rate? I'm just some things I'm throwing out there for you.
Mr. Schmidt?
So the the Joint Retirement Board voted during the spring of last of this past year, late winter, to reduce the discount rate to 6.9%. So the next evaluations for both the OPEB and pension, so the pension will will have that by by next month, will include a 6.9% discount rate. And then we do the OPEB valuation once every two years, so that it won't be reflected in there until next year.
Okay. And then on the OPEB, y- your opinion would be welcomed. Are you are you feeling good about the level of OPEB funding we have right now? Or is that something that you think maybe the board ought to look at and maybe even think about diverting some resources to?
Typically, the the board has has elected to fund the ADAC.
Yeah.
That's and that's recommended by the actuaries at 100%. During COVID, there was a a little outbreak from that, but some of the some of that that originally was not put into the budget was later on added back in from surplus. But but typically, the town has done 100% of the whatever the actuaries are recommending.
Oh, and they're, the actuaries are not recommending 100% funding necessarily?
On the OPEB?
On on OPEB, yeah.
No, they they do recommend 100%.
So in their opinion, we would be, we would do well to get these percentages up, is that fair?
So when I say 100%, I mean on an on an annual actuarial basis.
Okay.
As as they, you know, do their projections and amortize the what the liability is, they let us know what we need to put into it in order to ultimately, in the next 20 years, to get it to 100%, get the fund overall to 100% funding.
Okay.
And so that's when I say, when I say the funding 100% of the ADAC, that's what I'm talking about, putting in the amount that the actuaries require for us to put in in a given year in order to, over the long run, get it up to 100% funding in the fund overall.
Okay, now, you could educate us because this is a real, I got a couple of questions that are a real deep dive into municipal accounting. On page 15, the summary statement of net position, could you explain? There's two things there, the large increase in the deferred inflows of resources. And then, secondly, I don't really understand what the 110.354 million in unrestricted net investment in capital assets really represents. So those two things, you could you could go a long way to educate me on.
Just Mr. Stark, before before any, I'm not sure who that question's directed to, but before any
Either.
Yeah, can I just ask which, when you say page, can you can you please direct us to which page of the financials? And is it the backup, the the PDF page from the backup or the numbered page on the financials?
It'll be numbered page 15 and then PDF page 23 of the backup.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I should have done that.
No, that's okay, Mr. Centefanti, do you want to take that question?
Sure. So as far as the deferred inflows of resources, the biggest driver of that is the pension in OPEB plans?
Yeah, that big gain, right?
Right, so everything, everything is five-year smoothing within the actuarial world, so these deferred inflows and outflows are the byproduct of a five-year smoothing.
Excellent, Ms. Trouton guessed that yesterday as we were discussing it, and she guessed right. How about the other one?
The unrestricted is
Yeah.
It's just kind of the last category. So government is calculating this net investment in capital assets, which is your capital assets minus all the long-term liabilities and retainage and any any significant accounts payable related to construction. So if it's in construction in progress, it would it would be calculated there. So that's easily
That's what the restricted means.
That's, it's just kind of the balance after those other two categories, after you do that one calculation. And then the the restricted assets, which is, you know, that equals some of the restrictions you'll see in the back of the report on Exhibit C and then in the schedules, so certain things, the cafeteria money is restricted to cafeteria, the WPCA money is restricted to sewer only. So those type of restrictions, so there is a footnote that details that our fund balance footnote that'll give you some perspective on what the restrictions are.
Okay, I'll go back and look for that.
So it's just kind of a a a byproduct, again, these aren't statements that that the town uses to manage. These are the this was GAZB's attempt for people didn't understand government to to produce financials that kind of look like private sector, but they but they don't really, so. But this includes all the long-term assets and liabilities. You know, the government-wide statements, Exhibit A and B versus the fund financials, like general fund, your budget is just all current assets and liabilities. So this is kind of a product of the accruals and and the classifications that that GAZB requires, so it's I know it's not a really direct explanation, but it's just kind of, this is the rule, we follow the rules as far as what bucket it goes in, the calculations, and and it just happens to come out to be negative, it's just kind of a timing thing, it's not even the rating agencies don't use this to measure anything as far as trying to understand really your financial position.
Okay. I wanted to go through and look at variances from original budget, but they're so narrow that that would be a waste of time, and I just want to congratulate you on your forecasting accuracy. Anyone who was part of this, it's really quite remarkable. That's all for me, Ms. Trouton.
Thank you, Mr. Stark, other questions from the board? Anyone? Okay, just just a point of clarification, we did have a couple of questions on the on the pension and the deferred inflows. So for Mr. Centefanti, can you just maybe explain how those deferred inflows will impact the town's financial statements? I mean, the easy way I think about it is that those deferred inflows will basically, you know, come in as a reduction of our of our ADAC over the next five years. Is that the best way to help the the board understand it?
I'm not actually sure how it affects your ADAC because that that's an actuarial calculation, so I don't know how these may specifically factor in. These are just amortizing, and the whole point of them is just five-year smoothing. So if there's a big change in the market, like it went up, you're only going to get 20% of that a year as far as going towards whether it it does impact anything. And then same with the downside and same with your experience. So looking at that RSI, you see the different factors that go into the liability. So RSI on page we just look at the employee plan on page 100. Assume some of the those deferred inflows and outflows may affect difference between actual experience. I think that's where some of the investment income comes in, changes in assumptions, some of those things may be amortized in in this liability calculation, but I'm I'm not sure to what extent because we rely on the actuary, we do sort of testing on the data that goes in and and the numbers, but but they're doing the calculations as far as the change in liability and what the deferred inflows and outflows are.
Okay, and we can, you know what, we'll, for Mr. Stark and others, we'll we'll get more of a a walkthrough of this when we get our, when we have our actuary before us. But but generally, I think maybe the easiest way to think about it is that, you know, these differences, for example, the the difference in market value above and beyond what was estimated at the beginning of the year, that big number is going to be smoothed out over five years, and the smoothing of those things goes into the future ADAC, so it it won't, you know, benefit the town in a single year, but it'll it'll, you know, to the extent it it stays static, it would reduce our required pension contributions and OPEB contributions in future years. But we can cover that more when we hear from our actuary and talk about the budget. All right, is there anything else on the financial statements? Okay, all right, well, Mr. Centefanti, thank you again for your presentation, and as always, thank you for the service you provide to the town. You are more than welcome to stay with us, but if you have other things to do, you are free to go.
All right, thanks, good night, everybody.
Good night. All right, so we're going to move to item four on the agenda, which is to hear Fairfield's comparative credit analysis versus Connecticut Moody's AAA issuers, presented by the town's municipal financial advisor, Phoenix Advisors. We have with us this evening, Mr. Matt Spurndal from Phoenix Advisors, and his presentation is included in the posted backup materials starting on page 182, for everyone's reference. Mr. Spurndal, welcome. Thank you for being here, I'll turn it over to you, and maybe you can just quickly start out by explaining your relationship with the town and the services you provide and and then jump into your presentation. And I, you were muted, by the way.
Muted, okay. All right, are you good? Can you hear?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, sorry. Because I'm on the phone here and then I got unmuted there, so at any rate. Well, again, thanks for having me here today, it's good to see you guys, a many of whom I've seen before. And really, the goal here is to kind of give the the board an overview of the credit, you know, some of the 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 metrics that the rating agencies look at and where you compare versus other AAA's in the state of Connecticut. I'm a, I'm the town's municipal advisor, I work for Phoenix Advisors, I've been working with the town for the better part of a couple of decades. And really, where we come into play is in many different scenarios, but primarily through the issuance of bonds for the for the town through the capital planning process. And when you are getting ready to do a bond issue or trying to forecast and size and structure a bond, we get involved, obviously, with all those items as in addition to putting together the official statement that will go out to the marketplace, ensuring that your credit rating is as strong as possible and that the town best showcases the strength to S and P, Moody's or Fitch. And ultimately, ensure that we get the most bids possible on the bond or note sale and also which would result in the lowest cost for the town going forward with the lowest interest rate possible. And then other things we do are just over the course of the year, we might, you know, whether there's questions about impacts on debt on the budget going forward, we could we get involved with that. And a number of other things, refinancing debt when interest rates are low. So those are kind of the the overall thing, we're kind of an extension of the finance department when it comes specifically to debt. So I I don't know if anyone has any questions about that at this point. If not, then we could sort of jump into the credit analysis, I'll give just a quick overview there and we'll dive into the slides. So if everything, everyone is comfortable, we'll keep the ball rolling, good? All right, everybody, excellent. Okay, so what we did here was, and this is something that we do with, you know, most, all of our towns at some point or another in the process of a bond issue or something like this, where we're presenting to a council or a board of finance. And really, it is, okay, you know, we're getting ready to issue, or we just want to see where we are, you know, what our credit strength is relative to our peer group. And in this case, it truly is a peer group. Fairfield is a AAA by all three rating agencies, as I'm sure you guys know, Moody's, S and P and Fitch. And, you know, unlike other issuers, where you might be trying to get that upgrade either to AAA or a high double A, you're already there. So really, the the only place for you to go would be down as far as a change. But of course, the goal here is is strength and stability moving forward to maintain that rating. And thus, you know, with the highest credit rating, it enables you to borrow at the lowest rates, resulting in the lowest cost to your taxpayers. So with that being said, from the perspective of the rating agencies, although they're all different, the fundamentals are all the same. So they look at primarily four different categories, they look at finances, they look at debt, they look at your management, and they look at economic activity. And within those things, you know, within the economic activity, and and, you know, look at, you know, housing values and grand list growth and various metrics, whether it's, you know, grand list per capita or or, you know, whether it's debt to grand list or all all these types of things that we'll get in, we'll get into as we move along these slides. And within finances, it's typically fund balance, total fund balance, unassigned fund balance. Obviously, they look at pension funding and OPEB funding and all all those different types of things, demographics, you know, per capita income, you know, unemployment, and then there's obviously some qualitative things that you can't really stick in a chart. And that is, you know, some of the management policies and procedures, a lot of the, you know, how have you been trending rather than just how do you look at this one point in time? So, you know, that kind of encompass So, you know, that kind of encompasses what we're going to be talking about. I do want to mention that any of these charts are as of a point in time. So it's important to note that they're all sort of, it's in the best effort of being apples to apples and showing where everyone lies on this continuum at that given time. What we use as our best data source is the Connecticut fiscal indicators from, you know, that the OPM releases every year. And, you know, one of the problems with that is you get it, it's already a little bit stale. But the bottom line is, the data is there. And again, it's snapshot in time as of that end of fiscal year. What I've done to Fairfield, you know, for something like this, is since we do have a fresh 2021 audit, I've taken, you know, some of the financial metrics and brought them to fiscal year in 2021. For some of the debt ratios, because we've issued recently, I use those debt ratios just to keep it at least as current as we can from Fairfield. And there's a couple of the charts in here that are really just as of that fiscal indicator's release. So, you know, there's towns that'll go up or down slightly on the spectrum from one year to the next, but fundamentally, from one year to the other, not a lot is going to change. So these are all things I like to say ahead of time, so that when you're looking at a ratio and you say, well, where'd you get this? It should be 8.2, and you have 8.1. You know, let's not get caught up in that. Let's just kind of look at sort of where things are to get an overall feel for where the town's rating is. And, you know, obviously, it could lead to conversation about where the concerns might be, or where the strengths might be, et cetera, et cetera. So that's sort of setting the table for the next few slides that I have presented and prepared. And I will just, I guess, point us to the second, you have the AAA listing for the state of Connecticut. You know, there's about whatever, 15 there or so. You have the Moody's AAA. So we focus on the Moody's AAA, and then you can just see that there's, obviously, they have, some have two and three ratings, and some have just the one. But that's the listing of towns we're talking about, you know. A lot of Fairfield County towns, but also we have the Glass and Berries, Avons, sort of Simms, Berries, West Harfords of the kind of northern part of the state, and a lot of the Fairfield County. So not surprising, wealth demographics, things like that tend to help out when it comes to this. All right, so we're going to start the first chart, and I'm not going to spend a ton of time on each one, but I want to just set it up and kind of give an idea of where things are. And then if we have questions or what have you, feel free to chime in and ask. But the first one, which is a very important one, might have more weighting than really anything else, whether the rating agencies want to admit it or not, because it's one of those things that you can, you have the power to control more so on a year-by-year basis than, let's say, per capita income, or something along those lines. So your total fund balance as a percentage of revenues, keeping in mind, again, that this is snapshot in time. For Fairfield, this is of the 2021 audit, and it is a GAAP number. So it's your GAAP fund balance to your GAAP revenues, which includes the state retirement, and obviously, that screws around, but that's the same for everybody, but that's what the rating agencies look at. We try to prepare these charts, and we have over the last couple of decades, really, to really focus on really the data that they use, the specific data that they use that they're going to look at, so that we're not, you know, showing them one number that maybe is a budgetary number, which maybe is important to the town. But if they use the GAAP number, well, then that's the number that's more important, because that's the one that they're looking at. So here, you see total fund balance to revenue. On any of these charts, I mean, if you're going to say better or worse, it's better to be further to the right. So I kind of flip-flop it when it's like a debt number versus a financial, like a reserve number. And you can see, obviously, you're not the highest on this list, you're towards the lower end with that total fund balance number. You say, wow, that's bad, we're, you know, we're going to really be in trouble. Well, one thing that it doesn't show here is the fact that the town's fund balance, like seven, eight years ago, was 6%, you know, to revenues, and it's grown every year since. So those are some of the things that get, in addition to these comparisons, the trends are very important as well. And we, when we get on a rating call with these analysts, we make sure to illustrate not only the comparisons, but also the trends. Whether it's up or down, obviously, it could be a benefit or a negative, but in the fund balance chart, clearly, it's a big positive for the town. And, you know, both unassigned and total have, I mean, pretty much doubled in the last seven years or so. So we have total, and along the same lines, we have unassigned on the following page, which is about 10.4% again on a GAAP basis, you know, a lower, lower third, but still within the AAA listing here. Again, we try to make these very obvious, so that when you look at it, you can kind of know right away whether you're on the stronger end or the weaker end. So again, these are financial metrics. We have, moving on into the debt, we have debt, let me just get over here to the right slide, which is basically, you know, your par outstanding of all your bonds out there relative to your equalized grand list. Again, some of these ratios, maybe they're not as meaningful to you personally, or something that the town looks at that closely, but these are the things that you are effectively graded on when it comes time for the rating. So this is one of the metrics that they use. And again, you know, you're on the higher side there, but, you know, right, pretty much in the, sort of in the middle, middle to the left side. So you can see that that's really not something that would be a major concern at this point. You know, this next page, same kind of a thing, overall net debt, but now per capita. You can see about $3,400 per capita, a little lower than Will and New Canaan, and, you know, again, with the rest of the group. So nothing probably too newsworthy there. Well, as far as debt goes, as far as impacts on the town and how meaningful a ratio or percentage is, this is, as far as I'm concerned, probably one of the more important, if not the most important, from a debt perspective, because it's, you know, it's how much of your budget each year is occupied and taken up by debt service. And the rating agencies obviously see this as a very important metric. And you can see here that, you know, right in the six and a half or plus or minus percent, that you're actually sort of towards the good end of the spectrum, you know, near West Hartford, Darien, and nowhere near the high points of, you know, New Canaan Greenwich. So that's an important one, obviously, amount of leverage that the town has. Moving into a sort of a wealth metric, we have equalized net grand list per capita. And obviously, you know, Fairfield shoreline town, very large grand list that's been growing, and you can see here that the grand list is right towards the middle, the grand list per capita towards the middle, if not, you know, one notch higher than that midpoint Per capita income, pretty straightforward, right in the middle. Again, again, noting that by looking at these charts quickly, you can kind of identify where's the real weakness, or where's a real strength right away. And really, for all these, we've kind of been sort of, you know, middle-ish, maybe a little bit less, but still within the range. You know, the fact that the town has a larger grand list than many of these towns helps them as well. So there's a lot of other things going for it that necessarily show up in these charts. Now, this is a tax collection rate chart, obviously important to be able to collect taxes, to pay your bills. And even though you're on the lower end of that, I mean, it's 99%. So, I mean, nobody's going to ding you for that. I wanted to just show you there. Unemployment rate, December 2020, I mean, that's just the snapshot that the data had. A lot has changed since then, but, you know, 6.5% you were here on the higher side. Maybe the median of, median of this group is 5.5, nothing too major. And one thing I do want to know as we're going through these, is that, you know, candidly, when we get ready to go in to talk to S&amp;P, and I do this, we have about personally 40 towns in Connecticut that I'm speaking with the rating agencies weekly, if not more. This, this call, and Jared knows, and Caitlin, when we're on the phone and when we're preparing, it's typically, well, what's the concern? Like, what is the rating agency going to focus on that we have to really be prepared? Or that, you know, maybe their rating might be, you know, in jeopardy, or there'd be concern. I can tell you very candidly that when we sit across the room from these analysts, you know, what, obviously, it's on the phone typically, but when we're sitting down for these calls, there's very little concern, you know, as far as the rating. I mean, it's, the town overall is very strong. Whether, you know, your yellow bar on a couple of these charts maybe is a couple notches over to the left, there really aren't any glaring weaknesses or deficiencies that we could see or that the rating agencies have even, have noted since, you know, maybe 10 years ago, when your fund balance was, you know, 4%. And obviously, that put some pressure on the rating, but the town has come out of that quite substantially. The couple next charts are interesting. This is point in time as of the release of the fiscal indicators, just because the data, to update every one of them with OPEB, pension, and bonded debt would be quite a lift. But you can see here, all liabilities, so not just your bonds, but when you look at bonds, pension, OPEB, all on a per capita basis, it kind of gives you a nice snapshot of the overall liability per capita. And you can see here, you're pretty much right in the middle, maybe not to two to the left, but nothing that would, you know, raise concern when it comes to those items. And it's very similar on the next page. Now, this is to grand list, you know, debt, pension, and OPEB to your grand list. So you can see kind of where you fall on there as well. So, you know, that, in a nutshell, covers a lot of the major ratios that they, the rating agencies look at. When we were getting ready to, you know, sit with them, we prepare to make sure that we sort of go through something like this, include it in the presentation. Obviously, there's a lot of other qualitative items that go into this that we work with Jared and Caitlin to make sure that we have prepared. And that sort of wraps up the formal part of the presentation from, you know, the graphs and so on. So I guess, open it up for questions or discussion of any kind, be more than happy to take them.
All right. Thank you very much, Matt. That was very helpful. Questions from the board? Mr. Stark?
The presentation is just great. Thank you. You know, I asked Muni banker, what are some of the things that go into our ratings as well? He did mention fund balances. And I'm new to that topic, but also very curious about it. So I was, I was sort of doing a little comparable analysis while you were talking, and, you know, like Weston and New Canaan rank really high on fund balances. But their, but their Munis trade like at the same yield as ours, and maybe even a little higher. So I'm wondering, is the market, because it's been so frothy, like ignoring that right now? And has fund balance really come into play more in a recession? Or, as you maybe alluded to, is it the fact that our fund balance is improving so much that has kind of given us similar yields to a Weston or a New Canaan?
Well, to be 100% candid, I mean, the bottom line from an investor and how the bonds trade is the maintenance of that AAA rating. If you're trading at that AAA level, if you have that AAA rating, of course, if you really drill down, you'll be able to say, okay, you know, Weston has higher fund balance. So I guess, everything else being completely exactly equal, maybe their bonds should trade a basis point better. The reality is, it doesn't really translate to that level of granularity. So it would really be more impactful to the extent that there was, you could potentially have a AAA rating, but let's say, because whether it's fund balance or whatever else, if there's pressure on the rating in the downward, let's say, and there's language in the rating report itself indicating that there could potentially be concern moving forward, that's when you're going to see potentially maybe a slight difference in how the bonds trade in the secondary market, or how they sell in the primary market. Obviously, you could, you know, there's AAA's, AAA stable is, you know, what you would normally 99% of the time have. There's, of course, a negative outlook, which the rating agencies can assign. There's a negative watch. And once you start getting into that language, then you all of a sudden will see the difference in the yields. But, you know, quite honestly, maintain, maintenance of a AAA stable rating, and particularly when we're in an environment where rates are this compressed, you're not going to see a lot of difference between one, you know, versus the other. Maybe you see something, if it's Greenwich versus, you know, Woodbridge, or, you know, something like that, maybe there's a little spread. But even if there was, it would be, you know, not even enough to really notice.
So you're kind of saying AAA is AAA, but when, but when things get into flux is where these various metrics start to come to the forefront. Is that fair?
I would say that's, that's pretty fair. I would say also that there is another level, and that is, for instance, in a case like Fairfield, Fairfield was AAA Moody's and has been AAA Moody's for a very long time. There are some communities that over the last 10 years, maybe just got put into the AAA category, or as a result of a recalibration, or the use of, let's say, S&amp;P instead of their AAA. They'll, they'll trade close to the AAA, but I feel like there is a little bit of extra benefit that you get just because you've been there for so long. It's more of like a bellwether issuer for the state of Connecticut, quite honestly, from a local perspective. So you get some of that benefit.
I'll come back if I have another question. I will cede the floor. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Other questions from the board? Mr. Curley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll echo the sentiments. The presentation's fantastic. There's a wealth of information here, so thank you for that. And thank you for taking us through it as you did, because it really, it was a great walk through the pitch. So one of the things you talked about is this is a snapshot point in time. I get it, makes sense. And you talked a little bit about what the rating agencies are looking at and what they might be focusing on. I'd be curious to know how, how much the rating agencies talk about future forecasts and projections that might be specific to Fairfield in comparison to our peers, as opposed to just looking at a snapshot point in time?
No, that's a very good question, and it's a question that comes up on any call with any town. You know, what are you bonding today? What do you have authorized to potentially bond? And then what do your forecasts, you know, in the next one or two years? But then they also kind of look at, you know, the next five. And oftentimes, a town will have a five-year CIP that they can look to, to give some guidance on what potential bonding might be in the future. In Fairfield's case, as we all know, we have a much longer projection that goes into a lot more depth than most any town, to be quite honest. So the short answer is, it doesn't impact the rating today. It really doesn't. I mean, they'll ask the question, we share with them, I, we're going to, it's going to come up eventually, I'll just say it now to break the ice, the waterfall, for instance, that you're probably familiar with, we'll share that with them every year. And, you know, it really just gives them an idea of where the town sees, you know, their potential bonding needs going forward, knowing that there's so many variables that can change and be adjusted, and projects that could fall off, or move up, or what have you. So I think, you know, if you had, if everything was equal, and you had two towns, and one had a five-year CIP with $10 million, and the other one had it with $450 million, of course, there should be a little bit more concern on the 450 side of things. But they're not, the rating agencies don't typically or really ever make decisions for today's rating based on what may or may not happen three, four, five, six, seven, eight years ago from now. So in that regard, yes, it's something that they'll put in the notes, potentially of the rating report itself, they'll make a note in their file. But to the extent that, once we, as we move through that plan, and, you know, as we layer in some of that debt or those bigger bond issues, then, of course, that starts to impact the ratios, the debt to grand list, the debt to budget. And that's when they really start to potentially be more impactful from a rating perspective. So it's not something that happens right away. So it's not something that happens right away by any means. But on the flip side, if we were to show them a plan that, you know, or, or not showing anything at all, then all of a sudden we're coming to them with $40 million bond issues every year. That's more of a, a concern because it's like, where's the plan for this? When, to show them how, how detailed the plan is and how much the town and, and any, any issuers thinking about the future, um, it, it helps and it goes into that financial management assessment. So it can actually help the rating to some extent. But uh, yeah, that, the forecasting is really just more for, to give them an idea and not anything that would, you know, impact the rating uh, right away.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I actually have a follow-up question on that for, for you, Mr. Spurndell. And I, I appreciate everything you said, um, and that's helpful. And that, you know, these, these projections, you know, don't really impact the current rating because lots of things can happen in the future. But um, of course it triggers a question in my mind because if, if we're actually providing our waterfall, um, you know, during, during these discussions with uh, the rating agencies or, or when we're, you know, marketing our bonds or whatever, we actually had a change in our, in approach this year in terms of how we put it together. And our, our waterfall went from being, um, you know, loosely call it a plan to more of a wish list of, you know, everything that we might possibly capture, even though we don't intend to do all these things. So it went, you know, in numerical terms, so 300 million to 450 million dollars. And I just, um, and, and even appreciating everything you just said, I'm just kind of questioning or I'm wondering whether, you know, it, you know, it's really wise to have that as our kind of official document, even knowing that it doesn't represent what we believe will be reality going forward. Um, I, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, no, that's a, that's a very valid point and, and concern at the same time. And one thing I will say is the majority of uh, local issuers have at minimum a five-year CIP. And within that five-year CIP, there oftentimes are what you'd call the wish list items. Just because, you know, the, the police department wanted to get it in there for a new headquarters or, or what have you. And, and, and also the way that the state works with respect to the grant process, I know that those projects have to be on a CIP if they're going to be eligible or to be able to go after those grants. So it's really, and, and this is why, this is why we have the call with the human person on the other line is so that we can say, here's the plan, but these are the reasons why this doesn't represent necessarily reality or what's going to happen in the future, but here are the things that we're thinking about. And this is a, and, and we use the term all the time on these calls, this is a wish list, this isn't a need list. Um, you know, so even though the numbers are large and that could be cause for concern, they understand that it's, it's really more of, again, it's a planning tool, it's the what if, almost like the maximum amount of potential borrowing that a town would need is listed in here and it'll obviously be whittled back to some extent. So I wouldn't be too, too concerned about that because we, we have that conversation on the call. And we let them know that, hey, that we're not planning on doing $90 million bond issues every year, you know what I'm saying? So um, it, it's, it's, it's a reason why you have that qualitative approach. And it's not just pushing, putting numbers in a, you know, in some kind of spreadsheet and then pumping it out and whatever, you know, it gives you the rating. So that's a good point, and that's sort of what goes into it.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. And I assume that wasn't the case, but we, you know, as I said, we did sort of have this change in approach. And our current list, you know, produces debt service levels that are well beyond what we would likely ever do. You know, they're above 10%.
Right.
Um, you know, I think it was clear in terms of, you know, the presentation and the public record that this is not um, actually what we're proposing. But I just, you know, when it's out there as a document, and that's what we have to, to provide, it just seems to me like, I'm not sure if, if that's a good idea to, to do it in that format because then you just, you know, you, you wind up doing a lot of explaining as to why that's not um, uh, you know, why that's not reality. So, um, but, but thank you for that.
And one thing I, one thing I would like to just note too, is just in the course of the conversation with a rating analyst.
Right.
There are things that we share with them that may not be, to, to your point, really necessarily the reality of it, but it's, it's something that is out there that's being used as a tool, it's a forecasting tool, similar to economic development. You know, there could be a, a, a business or two coming into town that is in the middle of a negotiation, but we can't put that in a report because it's confidential, but we, we share it with them. The town shares it and just says, listen, could you, you know, make sure that doesn't get into the report because it's confidential. So there's a lot of that too that goes on sort of uh, over the course of the call and, and the, you know, in, in institution to institution as terms of like sharing of information so that they have a full picture, but doesn't necessarily get into the report that, hey, Fairfield's going to bond $450 million in the next 10 years. You know what I'm saying? So that's all sort of part of the, how, how it all works.
Okay, got you. Thank you again for that, um, uh, for that insight. Appreciate it. Um, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you, uh, thank you, Mr. Spurndell, for that presentation. Uh, I was, uh, I was very surprised to hear, I'm, I'm glad you said it. I was very surprised to hear that um, the rating agency would be looking at our waterfall. And, and I'm also a little concerned as, as Ms. Charlton said. Um, and the capital improve, I'm assuming when you say CIP, you mean capital improvement plan, right? So I'm, I'm wondering, uh, because we seem to be in a, um, like maybe flux is a good word with these, with, with, with both these documents. Do you have any good examples? Um, yeah, I know it's very, you know, you know, um, what's the word? Um, proprietary data to be sharing, right? But do you have any examples of, of what a good capital CIP might look like or a good waterfall? Because again, we are, we are going through this waterfall change and, and I think it would be interesting for us to be able to see an example of what the rating agencies do like to see.
Well, one thing that was a good point, one thing that I would say is the, uh, the CIP, so like the five-year CIP that shows up and would be put in the official statement, um, when we go to sell the bonds. I mean, as far as what a good one looks like or not, I mean, the way you have yours laid out with the Board of Ed and the town and the WPCA and what the capital needs are and reimbursements and non-recurring and things like that. I mean, that's, that's about as good as it gets, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's definitely a little bit more detail than you'll typically see uh, for, for any given town. And then taking that a step forward, see, and what we're doing really is you're like kind of incorporating that into this waterfall, taking it out longer and then actually, instead of just saying, here's our potential wish list needs and here's the potential sources, your waterfall is actually saying, okay, here's the needs, here's the sources. Okay, great, it's a wish list, so it's probably not going to happen this way. But we're trying to look at it in such a way that we can fit it into our overall objectives of, you know, not going and not exceeding a certain percentage of budget or, or what have you. And most towns do not do that, um, from the perspective of saying, okay, here's the needs for the next five or 10 years. And also, hey, here's the, here's the bond issue and here's how the bond issue would flow through and here's what it would do to the budget and here's how it would impact the mill rate. Not, many do that as, as well. So um, I think from that perspective, the town's really doing a lot of the things right um, when it comes to what your, you know, average other uh, Connecticut municipality would do with respect to the, the, the forecasting and planning of a CIP. So that, you're actually doing really well. It's just a matter of, you know, fine tuning the, the needs and how much of a wish list is it? And so there's all those concerns and things that go into it. But as far as the planning tool and the way that the town uses it, I, I think you're doing great, so.
So, Mr. Spurndell, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Spurndell, have, have you seen our, our most current waterfall? It was just released, you know, a, a month ago.
Uh, well, I probably did it, so I probably saw it. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure which one exactly because we did a few of them, but I have seen it, yes.
Did you do, oh, so you're, you're rolling up the numbers right at, at the, um, yeah, for the, for the long-term waterfall, okay. All right, all right. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Sorry about that. Um, I was muted. Um, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. And I just want to clarify, Mr. Spurndell, I think what you're saying is when you do the waterfall, you're, you're doing the debt model that shows the project, projection of debt service that flows.
Right, right, exactly.
And inputs to that are the town, what, what, I, I think what we generically call the waterfall is sort of the project list. I know that's not right, but just, just to clarify for everyone. Okay, um, Mr. Schmidt, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Matt was saying and, you know, what we, what we will put into the official statement. Um, and, and this was one of the, uh, one of the documents that went to you all was a, uh, a waterfall that included a kind, kind of a cap, as we've talked about, that guide of keeping our bonding at a certain rate. And so even though the, the projects on there may have totaled a lot more, um, we could reduce that amount to a more reasonable amount that stays within the approximately eight and a half percent. And that's what we would show in an official statement over five years, not, not over 10 years. Because realistically, that's what we're going to do, regardless of what's in the wish, regardless of what's in the wish list. Uh, you know, we're going to stay on average within that, within that cap. And uh, you know, I also want to point out that uh, First Select Woman has, uh, you know, stated during the working group that she wants to put together this uh, other task force or working group to look further at all the, all the things that are on the wish list so that we can help to narrow those down and, um, and, and, you know, and really decide as a group what really the priorities are.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I appreciate those comments. Do we have um, other questions from the board? Mr. Testani?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Hey, Matt, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Thanks for coming. I, the report overall looks great. I just have, my only question, I have really an opinion is what I'm looking for from you. Was there anything that you were concerned about when you looked at this? I mean, to me, the debt is still, you know, a concern for me, you know, and I know it is for fellow residents, obviously. Keeping our AAA credit rating is, is of paramount importance. So was there anything that you had a concern about or maybe any unfavorable trends or favorable trends that you could sort of pick out maybe a few things out of the, out of your report? Which again was, was great. I know a few people have commented and I just want to thank you again for it.
No, my pleasure. Uh, I appreciate the comments. And I, I would really say, again, i- if I'm taking a step back and saying, all right, we're getting ready to speak to the rating agencies, almost no concern from our perspective, looking at the town of Fairfield at this point. Now that being said, to the extent that, I mean, you can see the fund balance level is on the lower end of the spectrum. Um, you know, pension funding is always a concern in terms of making sure, you know, to pay the A-dec and, and, and those numbers typically go up each year. You know, the, the, and the debt number potentially going into the future could be more substantial maybe than it had been for a while. So there are some of those things that are concerning to some extent. But uh, you know, as far as, as long as the, the town stays on a basic same track that you've been on, I don't think that there's any concern with the rating overall. And, and that, that's, that's consistent with, if you look at the S and P report or the Moody's report. Basically, if the town continues to do what you're doing and doesn't like raid the fund balance and continues to fund liabilities and, uh, you know, goes into the market with reasonable sized debt issuances and, and doesn't blow the debt ratios out of the water, then things should be fine and the ratings should be stable. You know, they have, each agency, they're a little bit different, but they have certain points where, you know, if your fund balance is this percentage or, or lower, then you get, you know, a certain amount of uh, credit, let's say. And if it's in this range, you get a little less. And the same goes with the debt ratios and there's, there's a lot of things that you can look at and point to that could be of, of a concern. But that would be my big thing because it, it's a scenario where you've worked so hard, particularly on the, the fund, the fund balance side of things, where it's in such better shape than it was when we were staring at a negative outlook, you know, 10 years ago or whatever that was. And, and uh, you know, that, that would be the, those, those couple of concerns, but they're, they're good. And as long as you guys continue to sort of do what you've been doing, that there shouldn't be any, any, any issues with the rating.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Um, other questions from the board? Mr. Matola?
Uh, thank you very much. The presentation was excellent. Um, just a question on the fund balance. I know during the COVID budget years that several municipalities, um, they used some of their fund balance because they were unsure about the economic outlook for the, for a particular town. And um, so I guess I'm going to have two questions about that. One is, how did the credit agencies look at that, first of all? And secondly, when, if ever, is it appropriate to use your fund balance? Does it, does it truly have to be like a catastrophic emergency type situation? Just what are, what are your thoughts about that?
Okay, I know those are, those are good points, good questions. Um, you know, I'll, I'll address, I guess, the first question uh, with respect to COVID. And, you know, we were in, we were dead in the middle of budget season when COVID hit and we had count, I had countless calls with the town. And I, it was just like call after call after call from all the towns in the state about that exact item, what the impact might be on our rating. Oh my God, the roof is caving in, the world is ending, and we need to use some of this fund balance because we just don't know where things are going to go. We don't know what, you know, how, how the taxpayers are going to struggle or they're not going to be able to pay taxes and we need to keep taxes low and all these kinds of things. So, oh, there were numerous communities that allocated fund balance to that. I guess it would be the 2021 budget, um, because that was the one that everyone was working on. I can say the majority of those issuers, and again, I don't track it like that. I, I don't go back and say, well, you, 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 you allocated X and you only used Y and so on and so forth. But for the most part, I would say broad strokes, most of those use of fund balances were replenished. So they might have put them in that budget, you know, maybe they put 5 million and they replenished four of it, you know what I'm saying? Or three, so most didn't use the full allocation. So of course, if they had spoken with a rating at that time, of course, the question would be, well, what do you use with a fund balance? Well, we put, you know, $10 million of fund balance into the budget. It's like, oh my God, that's not ideal. Obviously, if you use the whole thing, now all of a sudden your fund balance goes from 10% to 6%. And, but again, that's if, you know, so even though it's something that, yes, we allocated this, the rating agency typically isn't going to make a decision based on that. They're going to wait until that audit comes out a year later to see, okay, how did really, how did things actually work out? Which is good. They don't really need you in that regard. So, I mean, really across the board, uh, the, the credits remained stable in Connecticut, uh, the towns we work with. We didn't see a wave of downgrades or anything. We, we did see some vulnerability with the, some of the lower rated community, maybe like the, the low double A, single As, had some negative outlooks and things that we're, we're still working through. Um, you know, because you only really work through it when you have another bond issue. So, you know, if they were downgraded or put on a negative outlook in June 2020, but they haven't borrowed since, then they, you know, they're still dealing with that. And fast forward to today, you know, if anyone could have predicted that 23 months later, we would all be in a position where, you know, housing values are on fire. Towns are, are fiscally as strong as they've ever been for the most part. The state of Connecticut hasn't been this financially strong in decades. Um, it, it, it really has had a, the, uh, an unanticipated impact on finances in Connecticut within towns that have strengthened, I think, overall, which nobody could have ever anticipated. So now to dovetail your second question about, well, well, when is, when is a good time to use fund balance? Or when would it be appropriate? Well, March 2020, April 2020, probably be a Well, March 2020, April 2020, probably be a good time to, if you're gonna use it, you know, that was probably a pretty, uh, good time to do so. Um, of course, from our perspective and from the perspective of when you issue bonds and you want to get the lowest rate and you need the highest rating to do so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, try not to use it ever. Because it just makes maintaining that rating harder, uh, going forward. Um, but the reality is you have pressures, you have, you know, bond, you know, debt projects, you have taxpayers that maybe say, you know what, you have too much fund balance, you should start to give us some relief on the taxes. So you, you have all those real world issues to deal with. And it's a matter of trying to balance the two in such a way as to, you know, not impact the rating. Now, I'll say this, if, if towns that I deal with that fund balance is on the higher end of their, of their, uh, policy, let's say, and next year they say, we're gonna just, we're gonna allocate 10 million and bring that fund balance back down to our policy threshold level. You know, they'll probably replenish some of that over the course of the, the year and it, it might not be as big of an impact. But we see that all the time and it's not something the rating agencies like. They just, they don't like it. It's, they call it, it, it's an imbalance structurally, you know, you got, your revenues are not enough to cover your current expenditures and, and they don't love it. It doesn't mean you're gonna be downgraded right away. But it is something that, you know, when you, when you do something like that, if you then have some weakness elsewhere, now all of a sudden, there's more momentum for downward pressure and that's where you really have to be careful. So I, I hope that sort of answers that question. The short answer is it's never a good time to use fund balance. But that's not reality because that's, you know, the other, your constituents and things that have those other, um, objectives. So I hope that's, uh, helpful.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Curley?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, uh, just to follow up on that a little bit. Uh, Matt, you had mentioned that basically if we maintain the status quo, keep doing what we're doing, we should be fine in terms of maintaining our AAA rating. And, and I, if I understand correctly, one of the policies that the board has tried to follow, this board has tried to follow for many years is making sure that we do pay attention to this fund balance. And, um, we're careful not, uh, to make sure that we, we don't allow, um, you know, the ratio of debt service to the, uh, budget, uh, exceed 10%. And, and I think Jared, you had mentioned, uh, that in terms of the waterfall, uh, you, you guys, the administration was gonna cap it so that we don't go above eight and a half percent. And I think that's consistent with what you told us last month as well, when you walked us through that waterfall. But I guess my question to you, Matt, is, um, you know, the town is facing some pretty big challenges, uh, right now. A lot of capital projects are, are gonna come in front of this board and, and the administration's gonna have some tough choices to make. So I'm not sure that we have the luxury to continue status quo. Uh, we'll certainly discuss and debate a lot of it. But I think one of the things that this board is likely unified on is making sure that we maintain our AAA rating and maintain fiscal prudency and, um, making sure we can borrow at the lowest rates. But that doesn't mean that we stay exactly where we are. It may mean that we maybe push that, um, ratio from eight and a half percent to nine and a half percent. Get a little closer to that 10% and some of the other, um, areas like that. I know that we're also about to, likely about to face, uh, an increase in interest rates. It's no surprise that it's likely that the, the benchmark indices are gonna, uh, rates are gonna rise multiple times this year. So it, it might be in the town's best interest to, to borrow a little bit more now, um, when they can, sooner rather than later to pay for some of these projects, but we don't want to push the envelope too far. So I guess my question to you is, um, as you advise the town, as you take, uh, take a look at that waterfall, uh, are you gonna be able to provide some guidance to us and, and to the town, uh, in terms of areas where we might be able to push it? Can we borrow another $10 million, uh, for this project or similar? So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the thoughts really there are, you know, a lot of it has to do, and what drives the boat here is what your actual cash flow needs in terms of what you're actually looking at in terms of your project. You know, it's not to say, well, you can borrow extra 10 or 20 million, so go ahead and do that. But if there's a lot of projects going on and rates are low and we can work that into the, the model here to, so that we do stay within those parameters that the town has, uh, sort of been, uh, trying to, to, to keep it within over the course of the last however many years. You know, there, there definitely is capacity earlier on. I mean, we've looked at this waterfall and again, you mentioned interest rates, there's a lot of things that can push some of these numbers higher. And even though the Fed hasn't started raising rates yet, the, everyone knows that they're going to in March. Rates have already climbed this month, one of the worst Januaries in, you know, municipal world in a while. Um, so we've seen rates start to come up, um, and obviously that'll impact this waterfall. So with that being said, yes, there's, there's definitely, you know, potentially some room. We're looking at, you know, 37 and a half million to 40. I mean, at the end of the day, you're looking at, you have outstanding somewhere over 200 million, I think, of bonds. You have like, say, say you have 200, big numbers, 200 million of bonds. Whether you do 35 or 45 million on a new issue, it, it really isn't gonna make too much of a difference from a rating perspective. Now, that being said, and, and I think that goes back to my point a little while ago, is that as you maybe load up some of the debt a little bit faster and a little bit more than maybe that you necessarily would be comfortable with, for whatever reason, and, and, and not every reason should be because you want to keep your AAA rating. I mean, you might just, the, the taxpayers want this new school and they vote for it and you gotta do it. You know, they gotta deal with all that. That's important too. Um, but to my point earlier is being sure to maintain the other items that are impactful from a credit perspective, particularly if you know that one of those areas might, might be, uh, I can say deteriorating, but might be more of a cause for concern moving forward. So if you know, like, we are really gonna be loading up on this debt and maybe we wanna do so a little bit faster and push up some of those debt ratios, well, that might not be a good time to start lowering your fund balance at the same time. Or to not make your pension ADEX because of whatever. So those are gonna be, it's gonna make those other areas that much more important to maintain when, when something like that happens. So that, that would be the, the real advice there in terms of, you know, making sure to maintain the, the rating. Cause once you have a few little categories that start to slide out a little bit, that is when you, you get pressure, uh, on the rating potentially.
Thank you. Mr. Curley, did you have a follow up? No? Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Walsh, did you have a question?
I have a couple. I have a number of them, actually, so.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Matt. How are you?
I'm good, Jim. How you doing?
Pretty well. Thanks for another excellent presentation. It's interesting, you mentioned, um, our fund balance, not too long ago, seven or eight years ago, maybe 10 years ago. I think it was two administrations ago, getting down to under five. I think it was Mr. Flato who was telling our boards that we could go under five. That was perfectly legitimate. Told the Board of Finance that, told me that when I was on the RTM. Turned out it was completely wrong. And this board scrambled after getting a negative outlook, you mentioned, to, uh, force that fund balance figure to go up. And it wasn't easy. I mean, it, it seems like, oh wow, that was pretty easy. We got there so fast. And Matt, you were there every step of the way with us. And I think it was a disciplined approach by the Board of Finance. I think it was a disciplined approach by you and the administrations when we made it a priority. And there was also a fair amount of luck in the fact that we had some pretty decent, um, surpluses correct over some of those years that enabled us to, to throw a bunch of money at fund balance. And I know the number is kind of attractive now. It looks like it's a pile of money, but it's not a large pile of money, actually. It go away quite quickly. And there's been some people in town and, uh, Matt, were you part of, you were on that capital, um, our capital presentation call? Were you, were you on that at all?
When, when was this?
It was about, in, earlier in January, it was our capital workshop.
I think so.
You, I don't know whether you were or not, but, you know, you might not know this, but the Board of Education came forward with, um, increasing from one year to the next, so from last year at that workshop to this year. They increased their capital projects by 180 something percent. Uh, one of the large items being, they wanna put air conditioning in a number of different schools. Project that's gonna cost close to $100 million. And there's people who look at our fund balance and say, hey, why don't you raid that? You know, why don't you go after that for 20 million bucks or 25 million dollars? It's the taxpayers' money. Uh, if you jumped into that and took like five or 10 million dollars out of that, it pretty, what do you think would happen? In one, one fell swoop.
It would make for, it, it, it'd make for a, a much more stressful call with the rating agencies and would lead to, uh, some more concern with respect to the outcome of that call. Now, what, what 10 million does to the ratio, I, I don't have that off the top of my head, but it would probably a lot, what, like a third or, you know, off. It, it wouldn't, they, it wouldn't be viewed, uh, very, uh, positively, I'll put it that way.
If we went up to, God forbid, 15 million dollars, which is really not even a 15% of what that project would cost, it would cut it in half. Sounds like it'd even get more drastic on that call.
The lower it goes, the worse the call would be. It's a linear relationship.
Yeah, and, you know, I've worked with you on the fund balance for, you know, close to 10 years, maybe. And it is surprising to hear, and you explain to us, that it's the town's money, it's in the bank, it's earning interest, and we really can't touch it though. It's mostly there for, there for a rainy day. But some of the communities that have had a rainy day, I think it was like West Hartford had a big ice storm, I think, one year. I think it was some, either West Hartford or a community up there. And they had to dip into it because of the thousands and thousands of trees that came down. And they got either downgraded, at least a negative outlook, and maybe you know, can recall that, but I thought they got downgraded actually because of that. But it might have been other factors, not just the fund balance. It might have been other factors as well. But it's just, it's, it's an odd, it's an odd philosophy that you have a rainy day fund and you really can't touch it. But I think, you know, our boards had to wrap their arms around that and understand that, that that's the case. And I think you described it correctly in a way, that if we stay true to approximately what we've been doing and managing the town conservatively, fiscally, conservatively, um, and don't go crazy one way or another, that we should be fine. And that's what we have found in working with you and, and the rating agencies, uh, so far over the last, at least I've been doing it for at least 10 years. Um, and that means not, you know, all of a sudden having a big, huge wish list and deciding you wanna go to market and bond a ton of money. Uh, it basically means living within your means and showing the rating agencies that you could live within your means and you can maintain your finances the way they should be maintained. Do you disagree with any of that?
I can't say I disagree with any of the statements though. Of course not. They seem reasonable.
If we go to your, one of the slides I had a question about, which surprised me slightly from some numbers we've seen at, at, um, over the last month or so at the capital workshop, was the debt slide. Did we, the, it's entitled debt service as a percent of operating expenditures? And you look like it's like a little bit over six for Fairfield? Now, these are a year delayed, correct?
Well, this is your fiscal year '21 audit, so yours are nice and fresh. And, and, and I think I'll, I'll, I, I think, I think that would come to mind, since I think I know where you're going with this, would potentially be the fact that, you know, from your budgetary perspective, and Jared can jump in if you want, um, your debt to budget, the way the town does it, is probably closer to 8%, right?
About eight and a half.
Showing, you know, six and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you're, the, the main difference there being, this is the pull from, straight from your audit, straight from your GAAP debt service as you listed in your income statement, directly divided by your expenses and, uh, including transfers out, that includes that state TRB pension, you know, offset that happens to all Connecticut municipalities. And by that being included, it includes, increases your denominator, obviously, and now you have a, a, a six and a half instead of eight percent, um, ratio. I don't know if that's where you were going, but I feel like it might have been.
Yeah, that's where I'm going because we keep hearing, and it was mentioned already, um, by Mr. Curley this evening, the same eight and a half number, because we've been hearing that over the last, you know, two weeks or so. And so it just kinda stood out when you went through it. So it's just basically just a different calculation. Correct? Okay.
Uh, yeah, they're different numbers. So, yeah, one's a budgetary number that the town uses for planning, which makes sense because, you know, well, you care what the TRB offset is at the end of the year. It makes no difference. But from the perspective of, uh, the rating agencies, they always use the GAAP number because they're, they're supposed to be apples to apples with every other town.
And on the charts, um, getting back to the fund balance. So despite the fact, I, I, I understand when we're looking at triple As, we've always been in the last two to, two to three, that hasn't really changed that much. We may have moved back on the unassigned general fund balance as a percentage of revenue, where I think we moved up one position. Um, but we've moved up one position, but, um, we've also gotten a lot higher in our percentages. And, um, we're getting a lot closer to the middle of the road where, past years, we've talked about this. You know, we, we, I, I definitely would never want us to be leading the pack and putting too much money away. But I also don't wanna be the lone man on the totem pole where we were for many years. So, um, do you think that we need to go up to get to 12? Or do you, would you, are you fine where we are?
If, if, if you can guarantee me for the rest of time, you could stay at that 10.4, I'd take that.
Okay.
Of course, the higher you go, the stronger the rating and the easier it is to maintain it, you know, in case something else slips there a little bit or, you know, someone, you know, GE leaves town, you know, there's, there's other things that, you know, put strain on ratings that, uh, the better everything else is, the, the easier it becomes to, to deal with those things.
The good news is GE left town and we're still here and still have a AAA rating, I guess.
Yeah.
So we survived, so we did survive, we did survive that.
I, 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 I know. That was, uh, that was fun.
And, um, there's no changes in how they come up with the ratings that you know about. Cause I know a couple of years ago, they went through a big change in, um, how they, uh, give their ratings and things like that, which involved like, you know, I think you came and gave us a discussion about, now there's like 20 different things to look at at first. You know, the, the smaller number that they used to look at, but there's no, 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 no big change on the horizon that we would need to know about, correct?
Fundamentally, from a data-driven perspective, there's been very little change over the last few years. You know, they talk about ES, you know, ESG and cybersecurity, you know, stuff like that that come into play on the call, but nothing that really impacts any of these ratios. One thing I would point out though, is, and you referenced the 5% rule. That used to be the case 20 years ago. It was, okay, you have 5%, it was called undesignedated. You have 10% total, everybody's happy, move on with life. As the town, as the rating agencies became more transparent over the years, and we've talked about this a little bit in the, in the past, but just to rehash it for those that maybe haven't heard it. As they've become more transparent and they've provided more information, you know, after the financial crisis, that sort of precipitated, you know, the opening up of the black box. Now you have a scenario where you can really see like what the ratios are, you know, nationwide, in your state, within your rating. And furthermore, so you, you get to a point where, you know, you have triple As that are all 10, 12, 15%. Well, then what happens is, here you versus that list of, because they're in your rating category. Now, to the extent that next year, everybody improves their fund balance a little bit more, improve that fund balance a little bit more, maybe you slide one notch to the left. Because the goalpost kind of changes as towns continue to build, because they just say, well, the average triple A is uh, you know, eighteen and you're only at ten, well, now that's no good. So it, it, it is something that does move over time, primarily because people want to keep the rating agencies happy.
Yes, and we saw that happen. I mean, I remember we were at eight and we seemed to be like second or third to last, but now you have to be in the tens to be there.
Exactly, so doesn't make your guys' job any easier.
No, because as we increase the percentage, budget-wise, as our budget goes up, it's a lot more money to have to be putting into it um, in order to stay, you know, in the same spot. So it becomes more difficult every year.
Okay, um, thank you. Mr. Walsh, do you have any more questions?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just, uh, I want to ask a, just a general question here, and Jim just alluded to it a little bit, but really it has to do with when I step back and look at this presentation, the metrics that you are providing us here in terms of what the rating agencies look for are actually different than what we always talk about internally. Uh, so for example, you talk about fund balance as a percentage of revenue, or you're pointing to that metric. We always look at, at fund balance as a percent of budgeted expenditures. Um, you know, debt service, again, we look at debt service as a percentage of expenditures. Um, you know, versus some of the other, well, you've got that here too, I guess, but, but you're looking at it, you know, you're looking at some, some different metrics here, so. Um, and, and the other big difference is GAAP versus budget, right? So I guess the only thing, I'm not sure if this is a question or not, but I, maybe it is a question, as we um, you know, we've talked about um, you know, just looking at our policies and making sure that they're continued, that they continue to be appropriate for the object, objective we all have, which is to um, you know, which is good fiscal stewardship, stewardship here and protecting our credit rating. I guess I'm just wondering, um, i- if we should be adding different metrics or, or looking at this differently, and specifically, you know, the first one, fund balance, which you indicated was one of the most important. Um, I wonder why we're not looking at that as a percentage of revenues versus expenditures, for example. Um, I, I just, I just throw that out there. Are we different from other towns in terms of how we have written our policies and, and how we tend to monitor this?
Y- y- you really aren't. Um, everyone has sort of their own policies written to what suits them best. That, a- at least from their own perspective, and uh, wh- uh, it, it doesn't always translate exactly to the exact data point that the rating agency is looking for. And furthermore, the data point that Moody's might be looking at, you know, might be to revenues, but S and P looks at it to expenditures. So there's, there's differences too within the rating agencies themselves with, you know, their points that they use. And on top of that is the fact that, um, you have to use what makes more sense to you, the rating agencies use different things, and then if you think about it, you know, in a perfect world, your revenues equal expenditures on a balanced budget, so it, you know, whether the ratios to revenues or expenses, it should be pretty close to the same number at the end of the day. Of course, in reality, it's not, there's surpluses, there's deficits, but um, you know, revenues and expenditures should be pretty darn close. So it's not going to make that big of a difference. Um, and from the, the perspective of, you know, changing your policy necessarily to um, adhere to maybe this particular chart, I wouldn't say that that's really necessary. Um, you know, part of the problem is the budget to GAAP that you mentioned, and that's just something that you're never gonna bu- you're never gonna budget to a potential GAAP number. Um, so those are all things, again, that sort of, as part of the rating process, when we're having these discussions with the rating agencies and the analysts to say, oh, we, you know, the town does it this way, it's a budget number versus a GAAP number, and they, they understand that and they get it, and it, it's, you know, they, they, they want to know, to make sure and know that you have the policies, you adhere to your own policies. It's not specifically like, well, what's the denominator in yours versus the denominator in ours? So those are all things that are, you know, sort of part of the, uh, the process of uh, of uh, giving them the knowledge of, of how the town does things, and fortunately, a lot of the rating agencies, you know, we speak to the same analysts, you know, every year, or at least they rotate around, so they really have a good idea of, of an understanding of of what the, the town's all about and, and sort of how you do things.
Okay, now that's, yeah, that's helpful. I just, it, it really struck me because, I mean, yes, revenues, you know, are supposed to um, equal expenses, but, you know, we also have a sizable chunk of non-tax revenue that, that comes in, and so there, there are just some other factors that um, that make it a little bit different, and, and as I look at these numbers, I mean, I don't, I don't know how we could ever benchmark against GAAP numbers, which is what you've done here, and, and that's why I asked the question. So it sounds like what we're doing is, is uh, you know, appropriate, and probably the, the key is that we have a policy, it's a consistent policy, we manage to the policy, and I think that's what, what you're hearing. Um, and I just.
And I will make, well, I want to make one point before you go further. I want to make one point, and, and it's on the management specifically, and on the town's policies and all this kind of thing, the, the, really the best uh, way to assess the, the, the town's management, specifically from a rating agency perspective, S and P actually rates your, and, and I know that, uh, the folks that have been on this board for a while are familiar with this, but they rate your management, and it, it has to do with your policies and the adherence to those policies and the fiscal plan, the forecasting and the planning and, you know, all these things, and move, and S and P has you at the highest rating of that FMA, it's called, the fa- the Financial Management Assessment, so if you're from the perspective of what you're just talking about with the policy there, I mean, you're, you're at the top, I mean, you've, you've gotten full credit, and, and even though you're triple A, it doesn't mean you, you would normally be there, that, there's not a lot of towns that have that, um, that s- what's called strong FMA, that's the highest you can have, so just something that I want to make sure everyone is aware of.
Okay, no, thank you. I appreciate that clarification, and again, it's helpful. I, I do just wanna um, I, I just want to, Mr. Walsh, I, I, I didn't think I heard anybody advocating for using fund balance for the capital projects. Um, I, personally, I certainly would not be in favor of that, but um, ma- maybe, maybe there was some offline discussion about that, but I would uh, certainly concur with your assessment. That is, that is not something I would be in favor of, and I, I, I don't actually think that was suggested. I, I think we were talking about uh, the capital projects and our capacity to bond for them, but I just, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, were there other questions?
I've heard it outside of the, I've heard it outside the Board of Finance, Madam Chairwoman, if you wanted to bring that up, so.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm not de- um, debating that, I just, I, I don't think that's been anything that's been officially raised in any capacity yet, at least in uh, in our meetings, and again, I, I would agree with you wholeheartedly that that would not be an appropriate thing to do. Um, I know it's, uh, we're, we're running, running a little late here. Do we have any other questions for, for Matt at this point?
I have two real quickies.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Stark.
These are strictly finance questions, there, there's no politics in this. Um, you mentioned a bad January, and my Bloomberg showing me that muni yields blew out about fifty basis points during the month, does that sound about right to you? Is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, on the short end, uh, uh, the short term they have, overall, uh, if you're looking at a twenty-year bond issue, they've, they've gone up not quite fifty basis points, but we've seen that front end of the curve slide up in anticipation of a fifty basis point move potentially in March.
Okay. And um, the, on about a ten-year issue, triple A versus double A plus, it's only about a ten basis point difference, does that sound right?
That's about right. Yeah, if I were to say, you know, what's the cost of a downgrade in this case, it's about ten to fifteen basis points.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's not insignificant, but it's also not the end of the world. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Uh, any other questions from the board? Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Spurndal. Um, obviously, uh, as you could tell by the very lively discussion, um, there was a lot of interest and engagement here in, in your presentation. Uh, I know this is a topic of intense interest to the board, uh, always relevant, especially so this year, so thank you again for being here. Um, thank you for uh, all the insights you provided, um, and uh, for all that you do for the town.
Thank you. My, my pleasure, and great to see everybody, and uh, I'm sure we'll, we'll see you all soon.
All right, terrific.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, um, so the next item on our agenda actually would flow nicely from this discussion because it's to hear an update on the town's bonding process, but um, I'm thinking about Mr. Walsh's suggestion earlier, and we do have the town attorney on uh, in the meeting right now, so um, if the board is agreeable, I would hear a motion to maybe move up the portion of item eight on the agenda that relates to the update from the town attorney. Um, and if we want to move that up to, to discuss next, um, I can take a motion for that. Um,
Yes, so moved.
By Mr. Curly?
Yeah, so moved.
So moved, seconded by Mr. Testani. Um, all in favor? I can't see everybody because e- everybody is, okay, so, Mr. Curly, Mr. Stark, uh, Mr. Matola, Ms. LeClaire, um, Mr. Testani, Mr. DeWitt, and Mr. Walsh, so it is unanimous. Um, so, Mr. Baldwin, there you are. Thank you for being here. Um, you were here, um, in response to some questions that came up from one of our board members to explain uh, you know, just in general how public comment works and some questions around our virtual uh, meetings, so do you want to just maybe dive in and, and take us through what happened at the state level that's, that's been driving these changes and how that impacts us?
Sure, thank you. I'd be happy to, and uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, as I explained to yourself, Madam Chairwoman and uh, Mr. Walsh earlier today and in previous conversations, uh, as I understand the question presented, it's whether or not you must take public comment at meetings. And the very short and quick and easy answer is no, you do not have to. Uh, under the FOI Freedom of Information Act as it existed uh, prior to COVID and the executive orders, and um, it's the same today with the new legislation to the FOI Act, which uh, more or less enacted many of those executive orders. Um, and so that's what you're operating under right now, are not the executive orders, but rather the um, the legislation which was passed by the General Assembly. So that's the, the, the short answer, you don't have to do it, but as I, I told the Madam Chairwoman, uh, and Mr. Walsh earlier, uh, th- there is an encouragement to continue as best you can the tradition of a board or commission. And if uh, if that includes taking public comment, uh, at certain uh, certain times of your meetings, say on a voting item or the like, then, then you're encouraged to continue that, uh, for purposes of just public um, continuity and continuity of your, your kind of board's culture. So, um, I think that's pretty much the question that was presented to me, and, and I'm happy to answer any other questions if, uh, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Appreciate you uh, hanging in, um, and through the first part of this meeting and, and uh, being here to answer that. Um, Mr. Walsh, you had a, a question or comment?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Thanks for the conversation earlier today. Uh, hopefully we can save some money and get you on earlier next time. Um, but, um, my question wasn't about whether we should allow public comment or whether we can, but I appreciate you answering that question. My question had to deal with the mechanics of um, we used to, when we first started during COVID and for about a year, um, have a situation where we had um, our own call-in for this board, and and the public um, could send in questions to our chairperson at the time and get them answered or presented to us, um, and they were encouraged to do so. Um, and, and then we had moved to a new system where we were all calling in, so basically it seemed as though the public was live with us and could almost participate during a regular meeting. I, I know that's not been happening. I know our, our chairwoman has been um, kind of clear that she, she, she might allow it if she so chooses to have public comment, but that it's not until the end of, after we've spoken about it as a board, and I just want to make sure that happens. I'm not sure whether, um, Dave Kelly monitors that or not, or what the process is for that, but um, you know, I think there was just, you know, we hadn't really heard about the change and there were just some questions, so I appreciate you um, advising me about some changes in the FOI rule. And what's going on, I think there's just, my concern is that we just have some level of decorum where our chairperson can control the room and decide when she wants our board to speak and, uh, when she wants to take public comment. So, but I appreciate you filling me in about the uh, change in the FOI um, laws. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I, I can tell you that it is the uh, long-term goal of the administration uh, to continue the hybrid model, where the public will always be able to listen in, and if the border commission uh, wants to have public comment, that that should be uh, a capability that maybe is more easily done with new technology that's being put in place than the current technology. So that, that process is underway, unfortunately, it's, it hasn't uh, hasn't yet gone into effect, so we may be in this transition stage.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Baldwin, and I, I want to take a question from Mr. Testani, but I just, um, to Mr. Walsh's uh, point, and I, I appreciate his comments, um, yes, I, I very much do uh, want to have public comment as long as we are in these um, virtual meetings. And um, I've spoken to um, s- some board members, I've spoken to our former chair, and I, I think what we've typically done, um, it's varied from time to time, but, but typically I think it, it's been a custom to um, have public comment when we have a voting item. And um, I think that's very important, so if we, if we had a voting item and, and, you know, we were in an in-person meeting, and there were people from the public that wanted to comment, we would, you know, certainly, um, uh, they would certainly expect to be invited to provide comment, and I think we need to do that. Um, I, since we, since we sort of heard about this change, I, I did al- also ask for public comment at um, I believe our first meeting when we did not have any voting items, but simply because I thought there might be public interest, that was the meeting where we had internal audit. Um, so I guess, you know, we can see how this works going forward. My, my intention was to ask for public comment at appropriate times. I don't think it is um, is going to be workable to, to have it go on throughout the meeting and have the public participate at the same time board members are asking questions. So I think, um, my intent would be to reserve comment, public comment for the end of a meeting, or to the extent we have a voting item, um, after the board asks its questions and before we vote. Um, exception with that, to that would be a vote on minutes or, or something where we wouldn't really expect to have public comment. So I just wanted to put that out there to the board. Um, I do appreciate Mr. Walsh raising the question. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for being here, and I'm, I'm just throwing that out to, to, you know, make sure everyone's aware of the discussion and, and what we're what we're trying to get to here. Um, you know, as long as we're in this world of, of not all being gathered together in person or in a hybrid situation, um, you know, my hope would be that we allow the opportu- the same opportunity for the public to participate in a meeting as they would if they were sitting in a room with us. So I just throw that out there. Um, Mr. Testani, you had a question?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair, and it actually gets to that point. How are you tonight, Jim? Good to see you.
Good, thank you. Good to see you.
Just a quick question, and Jim, I don't know if you, this is not necessarily FOI, or if you had a chance to uh, speak to the first select woman, but it does get to Ms. Charlton's point, and to a certain extent, uh, Jim Walsh's point, which is there, there was a constituent that uh, um, addressed the Board of Finance within the last couple of days, okay? About why we're not meeting in person, what the procedure is, w- we meaning the Board of We, meaning the Board of Finance. I happen to know that, and I made this point in my email response to this person, that there are commissions, including the Board of Ed, that do meet in person. So I understand that through ARPA and from what the town is trying to accomplish would be, and you use the word hybrid. I guess part, some people could partially meet in person. I believe it's at Town Hall. Maybe, Jim, you have more information on that. And some would meet virtually like this through, you know, these calls. I just, to hear that their commissions are meeting in person and have the Board of Finance continue to meet virtually, it's just, to me, it's just incomprehensible. Even with the fact that the hybrid room or whatever isn't set up yet in Town Hall. Or maybe you could shed some light on that, Jim, on what the procedure is and when and if we might be able to have some semblance of a meeting in person, knowing that other commissions are meeting.
Yeah, I'm not intimate with all the other boards and commissions that are meeting in person. To my knowledge, there are very, very few, and they're relatively small. And they don't generally generate a large public attendance. But to try to answer your question, Omicron threw a wrench in the works, I think. And it's my understanding that the first select woman was reluctant to go back to in-person meetings and discouraged it and encouraged the continuation of the hybrid meetings or virtual meetings altogether, to be more exact. So when we come out of that, I think is going to be based on the technology that's going to be put in place, which, as I understand it, has been delayed due to the supply chain issues that are going on right now. That's my understanding.
Well, Jim, let me just ask, I don't mean to interrupt, but the Human Services Commission, which comprises the senior center, as you know, ironically, is one of the commissions. Then there may be others that met in person in the month of December. So I just, again, it's just a little hard to understand why a board, any board, whether it's the Board of Finance or, you know, CP and Z or, you know, whoever it may be, can't... If there's other commissions, regardless of size, meeting in person, wouldn't it be up to the chair and the board members to decide? Or is there an FOI compliance along those lines, I guess, is part of my question?
There's nothing preventing boards and commissions from meeting in person right now under...
There's no state statute, there's no state rule from Governor Lamont, you know, because of COVID or whatever. There can't be because, like I'm saying, the Human Services Commission met in December, so.
That's right. And maybe, Mister Baldwin, maybe I'll just jump in here. And Mister Testani, you know, thank you for asking the question because I think it's a conversation that we should have. So let me just give a brief update. So after, and I'll try to keep it short, but after I became chair, I did have a conversation with the first select woman about moving back to in-person meetings. I do understand that it's my call to make, but I respect her view. And as a practical matter, we need to work with the town in terms of making physical space available and coordinating other aspects of in-person meetings. At that time, as Mister Baldwin indicated, Ms. Kupchak shared her view that it... You know, she was reluctant to go back to in-person. It might be beneficial to hold off a bit longer because there were still some people that weren't comfortable with in-person meetings. She also reminded me that the new hybrid technology for meetings, which you may all recall is being paid for with a portion of our ARPA money, was being worked on and was expected to become available within the next couple of months. Shortly after we had that conversation or after I had that conversation with Brenda, Omicron kind of happened, which in my mind temporarily settled the issue. So now we're at a point where everything is thankfully trending in a good direction with the pandemic. And I did speak to the first select woman again this morning, in fact, to get an update on the timing of the hybrid meeting technology. You know, I will share with the board that I'm inclined to coordinate the timing of our return to in-person meetings with our ability to run hybrid. I'm happy to take feedback on that, but to share my thinking, I'll say that, you know, despite the fact that these virtual meetings were thrust upon us by the pandemic, I do think there are some advantages to hanging on for a couple more months. Most notably, I am told by the first select woman that the feedback she's gotten from the public, excuse me, is overwhelmingly supportive of the virtual meeting format. It makes the process more accessible to people. It's easier for them to participate. I do absolutely respect that we had an email from one constituent, and there may be others out there that have different views on this. And our board may have different views on this. But the feedback the first select woman shared does make sense to me. Our meetings run long. Almost all of them are on weeknights. It's not easy for most members of the public to physically come and sit through them, particularly if there's, you know, a single agenda item they're interested in or they just want to give two or three minutes of public comment. So I don't want to suggest that this format is ideal. I know it's not. Once we have the new technology in place, I assume our default will be for us to gather in person while still allowing a board member who might be traveling, for example, to attend a meeting and to allow the public to, you know, participate remotely. You know, the hybrid format will also allow department heads or other presenters who come before us to avoid having to travel or physically sit for hours waiting in a room with us for their turn to speak. So I'm in favor of making it easier on those folks as well as making it easier on the public. And in my opinion, I think that hybrid scenario will be ideal. We don't, as Mister Baldwin indicated, we don't have an exact timeframe on this. No surprise, there are supply chain issues the town's dealing with on the equipment. But I do believe we're in a couple of months of having hybrid meetings. So we shouldn't be going through this much longer at a board, as a board. In fact, when I first spoke to the first select woman, we had anticipated that we would have everything in place by the time our budget season started, which is about a month from now. I think it's going to take a little bit longer from what I heard this morning. But that is, that's where we are. And again, I'm happy to take comments from the board. But I do, I did just want to share the conversations that I've had, and I wanted to share my thinking. And I do, I do think that the feedback about how the public gets to participate in this process is very important because I think, you know, we're all here trying to do the right thing. I think it matters to everyone that we're accessible to the public. And, you know, again, from what Brenda has said, the feedback is that the public finds this format to be more accessible. So I'm just going to pause there. I don't, I don't want to, you know, take up a ton of time on this topic. I know we have more agenda items, but I do welcome any feedback before we move on. I hope that was helpful. Does anyone want to offer any, have questions or offer any feedback here? Jim? Mister Walsh?
I know we want to move on, and we have other presenters and things to go on. So, but I think we should bring this up in another month or so, so it gets its proper due, so we could all say what we want to say. Those of us who've been on here, who've been participating in this board, will be a month further away from Omicron. We might know the supply chain issues, but I think it needs a full, everyone should have a full chance to talk about it. And I know we're, it's 10 of 10 now, and we've got a bunch of other things to do. So I think we just move on. That's my own personal thought. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. We can certainly do that. Anyone else? Okay, Mister Baldwin?
If I could just finish this up and say that I know that the first select woman echoes what you just said about the public, this being well received by the public. It's been incredible. This collateral benefit from COVID has fast forwarded us to the future. And I think it's the administration's belief that we're not turning back. And the public has received the ability to participate without having to travel to meetings and also the benefit of having these meetings taped and recorded, which will go on and continue regardless of whether you are holding them in person or not. So, you know, it's one of the positive things, the silver lining of this whole COVID experience. And it's up to the board or commission ultimately as to what you're going to do. But there's no turning back from that reality and the fact that these meetings will be taped, will be broadcast going forward.
All right. Thank you again, Mister Baldwin. And again, happy to, oh, I'm sorry, Mister DeWitt, did you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah. We have a quarterly, thank you first off for Krista Whit. We have a quarterly meeting on the 22nd. I don't know how that agenda is looking. But I agree with Mister Walsh. I think we should make it an agenda item and have a discussion. And I'd recommend maybe for the board to consider right now, adding that as an agenda item to our quarterly review in two or three weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Mister DeWitt. We can certainly do that. Anyone else? All right. Thank you again, Mister Baldwin, for being here. I appreciate your input and for providing clarity on this, on these questions to the board.
Happy to do it. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. All right. So with that, I'm going to pivot back to item five, which is to hear an update on the town's bonding process presented by the chief fiscal officer. I, Mister Schmidt, you know, thanks for providing, in advance, for providing this update. I'll turn this over to you, but if you could, please just let us know the page numbers and the backup that we should be following during your discussion, to the extent you'll be referring them, that would be great.
Miss Chairwoman?
I'm sorry, Mister DeWitt, did you have a question?
Well, no, just a comment. So we moved item number eight up to, and we have not completed item eight.
Yeah, I, I mean, I specified if we could move the portion of item eight up that related to Mister Baldwin so we could get him out of the way, if that's okay with everyone. Probably best to discuss the bonding while we're not too tired. We can hear the rest of it later. All right. Thank you, though. Mister Schmidt, do you want to go ahead?
Okay, I'll get started. And Matt kind of touched on some of these different steps in the process during his presentation. I'm just going to, I'm going to talk my way through the, you know, the process that we go through kind of sequentially. And then I'll refer you guys to some, a couple of documents that I submitted for backup. So the way the process starts, like, sort of like the budget process, you know, we meet with the department heads to discuss their needs. And we get from them the rationale for each of the projects, how much the projects cost, you know, where they get the estimates for the origin of the estimates that they come up with. And then we look at the timing of the projects too, as far as when, you know, when they project the project should be done. And within each of their, you know, their spheres of responsibility where that project falls as a priority. So this, you know, that part of the process takes a number of weeks to work our way through each of the, each of the departments. Once we've compiled all the requests, including the timing of the projects, we compile, we put them all together into one, into one package and spread them out over a 10-year period. You know, kind of taking some liberties at times with where we place them based on what we hear from the department heads and also based on our own, our own perspective of it. And some of the projects get spread out over 10 years because we do, we do stretch these out and put them into the plan based on when we think that we're going to use the cash for the project. So it's not just we, you know, take a $20 million project and we just put it into the year when it's, when it's being approved or when we want it to be approved. But if that $20 million project is going to take two years, then we attempt to project how that's going to be spent over the multiple years. And then once we, once we have the, have that part of it done and have the whole plan put together, we'll go back to the, back to the departments and kind of let them know where we, where we ended up putting things, if they have any comments or suggestions, recommendations on how to tweak it a little bit more. And also putting into the plan, the proposal from the, from public schools. And, you know, taking their plan and putting it in as they've, as they've proposed it. And then once the entire plan is together, we do, as Matt said, we give it to him. And he does all the forecasting, you know, and how we're, the structuring of the, of the debt. He does the official, the actual technical waterfall, which shows the, how the payments get made, the principal and the interest payments get made. And then along, kind of along the way, while all this is going on, we have the department heads putting together the 14 points documents. And so for any, any of the new members, if you haven't seen it before, there's a standard document that's, that the board requires for each of the projects to... There are 14 pieces of it that each of the departments has to fill out. That talks about, goes through the basics of it, the rationale, the cost, the impact on the town, whether there's grant funds related to it, what the benefits are, so on and so forth. And, you know, you'll see those when we, the first time will probably be when we do the non-recurring capital.
Jared, can I just jump in here for a minute?
Sure.
Can you, can you maybe refocus on the actual bonding process a little bit? So, for example, you provided us some, some backup on, I think we got some on email as well as we have some posted public backup that shows, you know, what got, for example, there's a schedule that you, that was sent that showed what got bonded in our most recent bond issuance as of July 2021. And that included projects from, that were authorized, you know, back as far as fiscal 18. Fiscal 18, 19, it included, you know, the Penfield construction. I'm sorry. It included a bunch of things that were, you know, sort of older, if you will. So can you just kind of explain, maybe refocus on the timing of the bonding, how it happens every year, how the bands work, and how what we approve correlates to what ends up getting bonded? I think that might be helpful.
Sure, I can do that. And you were sent, the document you're referring to was sent to you later, later in the day. It came from Jen Carpenter. The title of it is Authorized by Unissued Debt. I think that's the one you're referring to, Madam Chair.
Yes, it is. And I think when I look at that schedule, there's a column called the Bonds, which totals $28,395. I believe that's the bond issuance that we had most recently. And, you know, there's a summary of things that were bonded, which includes, you know, again, items related to Storm Sandy, Penfield, Mill Hill. Maybe, can you just take us through, you know, how, how that works and the timing of how things flow from the waterfall into the bonding process?
So let me, does everybody have this? If not, I can share it if you can't, if you don't have it up there. You want me to share it?
Sure.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll talk about some of the the basics of it. Caitlin has been working on this, you know, for for years and can go on to some more details. But I know that, you know, one of, one of the fir, when we're pre, when we're preparing for, to issue, we go out to the, to the department heads. And even though the, you know, we had the, the capital plan done and we know what, and have placed things as far as we can, you know, as far as we can project into the proper years, things change. And so we go to, you know, we go out to the department heads before issuing and and ask them what, what are their needs going to be? What are their cash needs going to be over the next year? So we have a sense of what to bond for, how much, how much the the sizing of the bonds. And then as far as the the structure goes and, you know, what's, what's bonds and what gets banned, you know, that, a lot of that is, we, you know, we're talking to our, to Matt, we're talking to our, our council on it, our bond council on it. And a lot of that is through recommendations of theirs. I'll say one thing generally about bands and the way that we use them is typically, you know, if if there are, if there are surprises or, you know, fluctuations that we didn't, that we didn't anticipate, that we can, you know, we can ban, ban for those which will, in the following years, in most cases, will get turned into bond, we'll use the the proceeds of the bonds to, of the next issuance of bonds to pay those off. I'll say that you, you can see in this document that there are a number that do go back year, a number of years, as far as when the issuance first happened and when the authorization first happened. And we're in the process now and have been for months to, you know, just to get a better handle on what those, what exactly those bonds are that are authorized but unissued. And it's, it's a tricky thing to do. And each one of these, each one of these authorizations, it has its own story. And so to really to get to the bottom of this, you really have to go through each one of the authorizations to understand what happened and whether it was, you know, that we were anticipating some kind of grant that hasn't materialized yet. And in a lot of cases, you know, see it on there, you'll see a recurring theme or trend that a lot of those are schools. And, you know, we do, we we do rely on grants from the state for schools, school construction projects. Those can take years and years to, to close out before we hear from the state and get the, get the grant processed. So I know that Caitlin's working on this. And at some point, at some point in the future, it's going to come to you guys to request some real, reallocations and deauthorizations based on what the, the outcome of that research is and the diving, diving into each one of these projects. So I, you know, I, I hope that explains the, you know, just getting back to the basics of of this, the, the main, as you, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, the ba, the column marked the bonds, those are the, that's the actual bond issuance columns for that, for that particular issuance. Yeah, and you can see it at the bottom, it was 28 million 395,000 in the last one. And then right next to that, to the right, is the bands or the notes that, that we took out.
Okay, so.
And so, and so it gives it the note, what the notes allow us to do is if, you know, if we have some surprises, for example, the Penfield construction. We had anticipated a grant there, but because of some missteps, we didn't get the grant. And so we ended up, you know, once we had finality to what that situation was and we knew that we weren't going to get the grant, we had to bond, we had to bond for that. It wasn't something that we, that we really could have anticipated when we were putting the capital plan together. So that, you know, that's an example of something where it wasn't, wasn't really anticipated. And so even though we may not have used bands for that particular one, you see that we we did have to use it in other places throughout that, this issuance.
Jared, can I just, and and I don't mean to jump in, but just, just to to clarify so that we're all on the same page. So what this tells us, if we look at the two columns that say this issue, that this means that in July of last year, we issued debt of 40 some million, right? 28 million 395 in bonds and then 13.8 million in short-term debt. Right?
That's right.
Okay. And then that short-term debt either, from a debt service perspective, that short-term debt is either going to be paid off or refinanced in some fashion. But, you know, to the extent it's refinanced, it will have to come out of our future bonding capacity.
Yeah, I'll, I'll point, I want to point out one exception to that, which is the Quincy Street Affordable Housing, which is, that was intentionally and will probably stay in as temporary, short-term borrowing for two to three years with the intention of that being ultimately paid off by proceeds of low-income homeownership that's being put in place, affordable homeownership that's being put in place. So the proceeds from the sale of those homes that are on, on town property would be the, that would be the financing mechanism. So tho, those, that particular ban will not become, will not become long-term debt.
Okay, gotcha. And so that just, that's just one thing I wanted to clarify. And then the last point, unauthorized but unissued debt. So I'll just pick one example for clarification here. So Mill Hill Expansion, which was 23 million, that was authorized. You know, part of that was previously bonded, 5 million 691. We, we had some short-term notes that were due last year, looks like part of those got refinanced. We bonded another 5 million last year, put out short-term debt last year, and we still have authorized but unissued debt of 7 million 583. So in that instance, where we have the authorized but unissue of 7 million 583, this project is, is I think, close to being done, right? So when we're in this situation and, and, you know, maybe we have that authorized on issue because we're waiting for a grant from the state, can you just explain how we're paying for the project in the meantime? Is that just coming out of cash? Is it coming out of fund balance? How, how do we finance these items where, when we're waiting for, when we're waiting for a grant, for example, for many years, like in a, in a school project?
So, and Caitlin can probably add to this, but in most cases, we, we're paying for it with, with cash in the town.
It's, yeah, if you would. So the 7.5 million for Mill Hill, so we've, just to give you a little bit of background, just to pick on that one project. So there's 23 million authorized to spend. We spent through like today, like 20.4, as we know, we're still spending right now. It's not enough, but I think we've spent about six or seven million this fiscal year so far. Previously granted, bonded grant is a combination of any bonding and grant. So just to let you know, embedded in that 5.7 million, there's about a million of state revenue that we've gotten back. Yes, we had notes due of 6.4, we bonded five, and we have a one-year note for the other five. And if you just do the math, that leaves you with 7.5. So, yes, cash out the door is 20. We have 5.7 plus your 5 million that we bonded this year and another 5 million in notes. So the difference being about 7.5. We're expecting from the state another three to four, depending on what our reimbursement rate ends up to be. So, and that comes through as the Board of Ed files for reimbursement. So not all of that is wait until the final audit. I don't know what the percentage is, but we could, in theory, be receiving some revenue in this fiscal year towards that 7.5 million dollars. But in the meantime, yes, it does use general fund cash if it needs it, and it runs through what we call a due-to-do from in between the general fund and that capital project.
Okay, thanks. So just, just so from a, to summarize, from a process perspective, the amount that we're borrowing each year is, you know, will be, you know, to the extent we've needed to borrow more, which was the case last year, that got supplemented by short-term debt, which, you know, in most cases, maybe not with Quincy Street, will, will affect our, you know, future bonding capacity. And then to the extent we are, we are spending cash that we expect to get reimbursed for, in in a number of cases here, we're just financing that out of cash on hand at the town and then waiting till we get paid back. And that, like, that's kind of what happened for Penfield. Is that accurate?
Correct. So that capital fund ran a deficit on the anticipation of receiving FEMA grant money and because the money was spent, so the money's gone out the door, we spent 7.4 approximately million. We had some insurance money to offset that and we had bonded the 4, too. But we thought we were going to be getting three-plus million and that never materialized. Finally saying, okay, that's maybe not materializing, then I bonded this year. But in the meantime, yes, it runs through that due-to-do from, so that would show that Penfield Fund owes the General Fund, the difference between the revenue and expense for that fund.
Okay. And again, we're, we're using cash on hand. We're not dipping into fund balance temporarily. We just have this cash sort of sitting around in our operating accounts that we're using to, to, to fund these projects until we get them bonded or get reimbursement?
So we're using essentially our current cash flow quarterly from our tax collections and then any state money that, that comes in also.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I think, I think Joe mentioned, I've interrupted on the audit piece that the capital fund was in a deficit this year and I, and that, it's really, it's timing, it's timing between the revenue received and the cash out the door.
All right. Thank you for that.
I'd like to, I'd like to add one thing, if I could, just to, just to say that this is, this is not atypical. This is the way, you know, I, because I know earlier, the, you know, the chairwoman had pointed out a different approach to the capital planning process. And this part of it is not, this is nothing different. This is the way that the town has managed our, our cash and our bonding and our issuances. From my understanding, and and certainly last year when we went through the issuance when, my first year of it, that this is, this is, this is what we've done and we, we've always been able to manage it and find, even though there were, there were maybe some old authorizations that we had to account for and make room for in the issuance, there may have been new things that popped up that we had to make, make room for. So this isn't, it, it may be, it may be new to you, but I just, I just want everybody to know that this is not a new, a new process and the elements of this are, are the same as they have been for years.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. And I think that's the point, right? This is, the, the, the way that this process is flowing through in terms of how we're actually financing things and paying for things, it just, it's just different than what the waterfall, you know, what the, what our capital project, it, it schedule implies. Our capital project schedule shows, you know, okay, we're going to be spending X amount per year, 30 million or whatever it is, but it doesn't quite flow that neatly when we get into how things get bonded. So I, I appreciate that. Mr. DeWitt, did you have a question?
Yeah, yes, thank you. And and maybe a stupid question, right? But, you know, when we were talking to Phoenix Advisors tonight, right? We talked about the real waterfall and, and that's, that's what, you know, the, the debt service. Am I to understand that that waterfall that Phoenix puts together is based on the first column of authorized? Or is it based on the, the, the rolling number that, that, that gets authorized and then paid, you know, and then banned?
Are you, are you talking about the, the amounts that we, the principal and interest that we pay each month? The, the actual, the actual waterfall, right? That's where you're.
That's exactly what I'm asking, yes.
Yeah. So that, that takes into account any past, any, any past debt that we have, all the debt together that the town has accumulated. And then adding, layering onto that, any of the, any of the future, whatever the future projections are for debt.
Well, let me ask the question a different way. We've been getting these waterfalls since fiscal year 12. Has the fiscal year water 12 that Phoenix done for us been carrying 2.555 million dollars in principal and interest, even though we haven't bonded that yet?
No. No, it would only be what was issued.
Only what's issued? Okay. Good. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stark, did you have a question?
Yeah. A follow-up on what Mrs., Ms. Bossi said about Penfield. I, I think you indicated that there's essentially a receivable owed to the General Fund. And so that would appear in the due from other funds line? Is that right? In the General Funds balance sheet?
Penfield Pavilion Capital Fund owes the General Fund.
Yeah.
Because their revenue was less than their expenses.
Okay. So I'm, I'm one, so it's incumbent on us as a board, I guess, since we're not going to get that money for Penfield. If we want to increase the General Fund, we're going to have to pause the General Fund to, like, to write off that receivable and then maybe replenish that.
No, the receivable was on, the receivable was in the Capital Fund.
Yeah.
Not on the General Fund side. So we have issued the bonds this year.
Okay.
So this is going to be one of the projects now that's going to be, we're going to ask to come forward and to close out with the authorized because now we're back in balance.
Will, will the General Fund ever write off that receivable for Penfield? I assume it will, right?
So the General Fund didn't, had, they had a, a receivable from the Penfield Capital Fund.
Yeah.
Which has now been wiped out because these bonds that we issued, if you look at your sheet, we issued 3 million in bonds, which the cash goes back to the General Fund.
Okay, so then the Capital Fund, the General Fund does recover on the receivable then, that way?
Yeah, they recover because we bond, we bond, and the bonding proceeds will get, will, will pay back the due from.
And then for the Mill Hill Expansion, somewhere in the education budget, presumably there's a, some other line item that reflects the 7.58 million?
No. It doesn't hit the Board of Ed budget, it's a capital project that we hold on a town side.
Okay, so that's probably in the Capital Fund budget, then?
That's in the Capital Fund that, the Capital Fund houses a lot of projects.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stark. And I just, I, I, you know, just to be clear, I, I don't think we are, and only because I don't want to put anybody on the spot here, you know, we didn't, the intent here, I think, was to use this schedule for the purpose to just sort of illustrate, illustrate the process and, and how the financing actually flows. And it, and the fact that it doesn't, you know, really align with the waterfall schedule that, that we look at, because a lot of other things happen. So, you know, we're not, you know, to the extent, to the extent that we have questions here that sort of relate to the process, that would be great. I, I don't think we're trying to get into specific projects here. So, are there other, other questions from the board? I have to scroll here because I, Mr. Curly.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate the comment about not getting into the weeds on specific projects. But I, I'm looking at, boy, I got to go back to the online PDF here to try and find it. But I'm, I'm looking at the PDF pages 95 and, or 195 and 196, Jared, and those are the status of the 2021, 22 capital projects and. And those are the status of the 2021, 22 capital projects and the 22, 23 capital plan. I just want to make sure I understand the process correctly. So the 22, 23 capital plan that, that you've provided in this backup does differ from the waterfall. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Is it because the things that were on the waterfall have been, that was perceived as kind of a first draft wish list and that, that you have taken projects off? Or is it different because of timing issues? Like, for example, and not to get into detail on projects, but for example, if the timing of a project that was in the waterfall for this upcoming year may not be spent, and I'm thinking specifically about the, some of the HVAC that was in the Board of Ed side of things. But if that would not be spent in the 22, 23 capital plan, it would not be on your schedule. I, I'm just trying to understand, trying to reconcile these schedules to what we saw a month ago.
Sure. That's fair. So we, what you see there on page 196 of the backup, is everybody okay with the one that I'm, that I was sharing? You want me to stop sharing that?
Yeah, you can stop sharing that.
Okay. So this one on page 196, what's in here is, I'll say, it's revised from what you saw less than a month ago. I, what I did in here, there were only a couple changes on the town side. Basically for, let's see, there were a couple of things in the cap, I believe it was the capital non-recurring, that were DPW projects that were removed just because we were, we're reevaluating it, had to do with a town garage or, and we're reevaluating what to do with it. And so aren't ready to just commit to putting that into the 22, 23 list for now. As far as the Board of Education, we, I take what they give me and I put it into the, into the plan. Not saying that we, that we support it. It's, it's what they have given and I want to give it its, its due respect and, and review. So it gets put into the plan. And so what, this is my, my latest understanding of what they're, what they're doing. And as of last week, Thursday, I believe they had a meeting, they did a, a first read of a, a changed plan. And the changes were, for the most part, and I'm generalizing, that they took the projects that they had in their original plan and converted them or spread them out to reflect how they were going to use cash for those, for those plans. As opposed to what they had, what they had originally, which I didn't, I didn't understand at first, in the original plan, they had put in, let's say, a project again was 20 million dollars, they put it into a single year based on when they thought it was going to be approved. So if it gets approved in, in, you know, 2024, then they just put the 20 million dollars in there. As opposed to now, what the, what I understand that they have done, at least for the HVAC part, was to spread that out. So if it's a larger project, it'll get spread out over a number of years based on when they think they're going to use the cash. And so what you see here, especially at the, at the bottom of that page, 196, that one BOE item, the AC projects, this is a reflection of what I understand to be the first, kind of the first part, the planning and design of the HVAC system for those three schools. And so that's the, that's the cash that would be needed for this project. Now, when these items come to you for approval, you're not, you're not going to be approving $2 million on a net basis, 1.1 million. The year, I, I believe the resolution that you're going to get is for about $24 million, which is the entire project. Again, this is just reflecting the cash that's going to get, that they anticipate using in the 22, 23 year.
Okay. So, so Jared, and I know, sorry, I'll follow, let Mr. Curly follow up. But basically, what you're showing us here is the cash flow that will go into the waterfall versus the capital project plan, which had the project in its entirety based on when it was expected to be requested or approved?
On, on the Board of Education side, yes. On the town side, on the town side, we, we did our best to estimate when we were going to need the cash for certain projects.
Okay. So what, what this says is that on a cash basis, what's in the waterfall currently for next year is totaling something like 25 or 26 million cash versus, I think, whatever it was that we saw, 40, 40-plus million. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And I'm sorry, Mr. Curly, you, you had a follow-up and I jumped in. Do you want to?
Yeah, no, that.
I wanted to clarify one other thing if I could, just to, since, since you're on that item and, you know, there, there's sort of an anomaly here with those AC projects. Where you, where you see the other source for the AC projects, 1.116 million. So a million of that is ARPA money that the town decided, we wanted to, you know, we wanted to share some of the 25 million dollars that we got from the ARPA money. And so this was our way of sharing some of this with the Board of Education. So we put a million dollars into the, into the HVAC project. So a million of it, of that 1.116 is that. And then the rest, the 116, 320 is essentially the, the state school construction portion, grant portion of that grant, or of that project. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you for that. Craig?
Yeah. And again, I don't want to get into the weeds on any specific project now. I know we're running long. But I, I guess, I understand that what was presented last time we met, things change. That's fine. I get that. And I do recall in that presentation when the Board of Finance took us through their capital projects and talked about HVAC, there was a specific discussion about when that money would be spent versus when it needed to be approved. And, and I think there was a presentation issue. But I think, one thing that I think would be helpful to me, and I think it would be helpful to all of the board members, is we do have some large projects on the horizon that will straddle over different years. And obviously, we need to be able to get our arms around the big picture and understand that this isn't a $2 million project. It's a $14 million project or a $24 million project. So I think it would be helpful if you would consider a schedule that showed total project cost and then kind of a, a schedule of year-by-year spending for those larger projects. Some will be all in one year and others will be spread. But I think that would help us reconcile as well. Like if, for example, that project last, last month was, that we talked about last month, was presented in terms of approve, approval amount and then cash needs. And then we could tie back to this 2.2 that you present here. And I understand that it's been a bit of a moving target, but I, I think if we can keep that in mind, I think it would help, help all of us. But thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Curly. I, I agree. I think the, and, and that's part of the point of, of Jared taking us through this is that, you know, there is a, there can be, these are, some of these are big, big multi-year projects. And there can be a very significant difference between when we approve them and when they actually get financed. And, and those differences can have a, a significant impact on those bonding or those debt service percentages that we're all, that we, that we've all been talking about earlier this evening. Does anybody else have questions on this? Mr. Walsh?
I think we could talk about it at another meeting. But what the Board of Ed just did, I guess, with those numbers, and Jared, I respect that you were respecting them and putting them in, is something really, we're going to have to decide whether we approve that system. And whether we want to apply that, it should be complied consistently throughout both sides, Board of Ed and town side. And I understand Mr. Curly's point. He makes a very good point. I mean, clearly, some of the money's going to be spent in, in given years. But, you know, we're going to have to get used to whatever this new worksheet's going to be, to see what the total spend is going to be on given years to make sure we're not going over it. And I think it's something we're going to have to work on. Hopefully, Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Bossy. But I don't think it's something that the Board of Ed dictates to us. I think it's really, it's a nice suggestion. Maybe it'll work the way they want to. But I think we're going to have to get comfortable with that going down and down as we go down further, you know, this year and, and see whether we want to do it that way. Because it's just a different way than we've been doing. And I'm not saying it's a wrong way. I'm just saying it's a new way. And we all got to get on the same page on it. So we're not going to figure it out tonight. But I think it's a good conversation, but we should get it on another agenda. Thanks.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Walsh. I think it'd probably be helpful to have that schedule or, or an update of the schedule prepared when these actual bonding authorizations come before us, so that we can see what we're actually doing. If we're approving X dollars, how that's actually going to flow in terms of actual debt service. And, and, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Curly's suggestion. Does anybody else have questions on this? I know we have a couple more items on the agenda and I'd like to move on if we can. But anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for taking us through this. And, you know, maybe we can, you know, if anybody from the board has comments or suggestions, I'd, I'd be happy to collect them. But I, I do think it's important that we, you know, going forward, can figure out how we, how we track these things so that when authorizations come before us, it's easy to see, were they in the waterfall for how much and when does the cash flow ultimately schedule itself out? So thank you for that. We're going to move on to item number six, which is to discuss financing matters related to the proposed paving plan. As I mentioned earlier, this item is a follow-up that was requested as a discussion during our recent capital planning workshop. The administration previously presented the street paving plan to this board, the Board of Selectmen and the RTM in the joint meeting, as we all know. And to be clear, the intent for this discussion item is, is not to revisit the overall paving plan again. The focus is specifically to discuss how the paving plan will be financed. As background, just for the public, for a number of years, paving has generally been considered an annual maintenance cost and it's been included, and it's been included in the town's operating budget. With one exception in recent history, and that was two years ago, in the, what I'll call the pandemic budget, where our $2 million operating budget for paving was cut to 1 million and the remaining 1 million was approved for bonding. Last fall, the administration proposed that the town devote 3 million of ARPA funding to paving in order to do some catch-up work. And that 3 million was approved as part of the overall ARPA plan. Subsequent to that, the administration presented its long-term paving plan to the joint boards. And that plan called for using the 3 million of ARPA funds and bonding an additional 10 million of paving costs over the next five years while keeping the operating budget for those years at roughly 1 million annually. That would be a departure from our current policy and our past practice. And obviously it would absorb a portion of our annual bonding capacity. Thus, the reason it's on our agenda for discussion this evening. The entire paving presentation that we already saw in our previous meetings is, is included in our posted backup materials. But I think what's relevant to this discussion is, is really just two pages. One, the first is on page 197 of the posted backup and it's a slide entitled, Proposed 22, 26 Roadway Capital Improvement Plan Summary. So that lays out the administration's proposal. And then the other page that's relevant is on page 220. And that is a, that's entitled Town of Fairfield Paving History, and it shows the history of paving costs for the past 10 years. So this is, this is really just, you know, as I mentioned, and, you know, a request for a discussion among our board members. And Mr. Walsh, you had, you had asked that we, that we have this on the agenda. So I would invite you, if you would like, to kick off the discussion?
Sorry about that. Sure. Well, number one, the page that I received, I know there's a bunch of different versions, seems to have some wrong numbers in the net field, the net parentheses bonding field. Because I thought it was supposed to be the total field minus the other sources to come up with the net bonding. And on 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027, it seems to be off that the other sources number is not being deducted. Am I missing something?
So this is page 197, for everybody's reference. Yes. Mr. Schmidt?
Um, yeah, it looks like there were the totals where there, it wasn't netting out the, wasn't netting out the other sources.
Okay. So really what it's looking like is that in 2023, the number's correct, that you'd be looking, I, I guess this is what's considered the town proposal? Jared?
Yes.
And then in 2024, that number would go down to, my math shows 1,487, 182. And 2025 is 2,580, 77. Then it goes to 2026, 2,273, 34. And then in 2027, 2,057, 03. The total is correct at 10,131, 938.
I would agree with that. I think the first one, the 2023 net, is different than what's up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
My math's wrong.
So that should be 1,780,342.
1,780, what's the last?
1,783,42.
And last year, we had, we had put in the budget $1 million paving. But the previous years, we'd pretty much averaged $2 million bucks. There's one that, you know, an odd year in there for 1.5. But if you look at most of the last number of years that you have, later, the, the other page, two, whatever, 200 and something, I can't remember the exact page number, it looks like we've pretty much been putting $2 million in. And, you know, I think, it's kind of interesting. So there's a number of ways to skin this cat. But I think the town's going to have to put up, at least my thought is, is to buy, is to put in more in operating expenses. And I would like to personally see around $2 million go in there as a flat amount. Because by the end, if we put $2 million in, we would, every year for the next five years, well, we'd continue that in the sixth year. Because in 2028, we have to put $2 million in every year pursuant to the plan. And I think the $10 million, if you're trying to say the $10 million is catch-up, I, I don't know whether that's all catch-up, to be quite honest with you. And I think it's just a large number to be putting towards our debt. And I'd rather see the number be around $5 million, which if we put in an extra million dollars every year into other sources, would bring us to approximately the $5 million number. It just seems like it's got that, I, I don't understand why we'd be going down to $1 million when we know pretty much the annual cost other than catch-up is $2 million.
So the, a couple of things. One, in, so in addition to this, we also include about $500,000 in road, road repairs and sidewalk maintenance, which are truly, you know, are, are as they should be, you know, funded out of the operating budget. They, you know, don't have a, as long a lifespan. You know, I- Um, you know, I I guess what the, what the first selectwoman is saying is that we should. Uh. You know, not, not really draw a line in the sand here because this is a cat, it's a. It's a critical uh, part of our infrastructure and I, it is, it's truly a capital expense. Um, and it, although it may re, may recur every year. Um, you know, we have other capital expenses that do as well. Um, it's, it's a capital expense. It's uh, you know, so in that sense is eligible for uh, to be bonded. Um, and. My, the concern is, one of the concerns is that by. We're, I think part of the reason that we're in this situation where we are now, that we have kinda this buildup of of backlog. Is because the, the policy that was put in place in the past without any kind of uh, escape hatch. Has. I think it's kind of pre- prevented you guys or discouraged you guys from putting enough into it to be able to s- to stay on schedule. And so what we're saying, so.
I think you're missing something in that. I mean, that's, that's nice to say, and I know you haven't been here all that long, but. You know, with a different first selectman, Mister Tetro. We had a plan. We had a whole plan. Similar type, not, not maybe as fancy as this where you drive down the road and. Some computer cameras taking vid- visi- video images of cracks and stuff like that. But we had another company consult on it. We had a whole plan that was. I don't know, maybe Chris remembers or Mary, um, but uh, it was like twenty, twenty-five pages long. And. We, we said we were gonna do that plan. And there was a catch-up component of that, and we bonded the catch-up component of that. It might have been. Three, four. I think John was on here as well. Sorry, John, if I missed you, but, but John was, John, John was definitely on here. Um, and 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 made this great plan, this great catch-up, like a catch-up bond. And we funded the bond. And not one year did we ever follow it. We immediately fell off. The Tetro administration decided they didn't wanna fund to that amount. So it was supposed to be for a year. Next year it never happened. And, you know, I guess you could blame. The Board of Finance a little bit to, that I was on too, because I guess we could have raised the amount to whatever the plan number was, but. The administration wasn't even supporting the plan from day one. I would like to support a plan. I kinda like the plan that you have. I kinda like the company. They made a good presentation. I'd like to catch up. I know we're a little behind, I know we're a bit behind. We're not as far behind as we thought, based on the quality of our roads. I'll tell you that much. That that came, that became very clear. That I think he said, out of all the towns that he does in Connecticut, there might have been one with a higher rating of our total roads. But I will tell you, I think this decision. For philosophy in regards to our paving of roads being an operating expense or a capital expense. Sailed a long time ago. And that the Board of Finance, uh, which. I think this board should respect or to respectfully look at those reasons. But we had chances to change that all the time. And I think what we all looked at is that we were putting a certain amount towards roads. Why would we bond it just to eventually at some point in time just be paying the. The principal and the interest? I don't wanna pay the interest on it. I wanna get to a certain point where we get to a realistic number on what paving costs in this town. And not bond it every year. I I I'm just telling you my, this is my own personal philosophy. I'm willing. To hear the other eight of you give your philosophies. But why should we pay interest on that if we have to do this every year to the tune of. Somewhere between some years, it was actually three million dollars for you to put a paving. So I like the plan. I would like to catch up. I I'm not. Blaming anybody from the current administration that, you know, you were part of the falling behind and whatever, but. Putting a million dollars in is falling behind. I think we could all agree on it. So I just think that, I do agree that there's a catch-up component of this. I also can understand that there's an ARPA component of this. Uh, but I think that we're gonna have to, at least personally, I think, can have to get up to a larger number. Or gear it up over the next five years to some degree. You know, I I'm not saying we gotta hit it right away. Maybe we build it up to one point five and 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 so on, but there, there can be a. I know I'm willing to give. This plan a chance and to do some catch-up with bonding, but ten million dollars is a lot. It's, it's a lot of money and it doesn't get you to this cliff you kinda have where after the two thousand twenty-seven, it's like all of a sudden the next year. Boom, oh, we gotta put two million dollars in. So I'm just telling you my thoughts. I'm willing to give the rest of my, my board's. Opinions and and ideas. Or you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mister Walsh. Um, appreciate you kicking us off and and raising. Um. And and raising this issue for discussion. Uh, Mister Dewett, did you wanna comment?
Yes, yes, please, Madam Chair. Um. Two thousand nine-ish. This board. Uh, decided that we were gonna wean ourselves off of bonding for paving. And in twenty eleven, the twenty eleven fiscal year twenty eleven budget. We were completely weaned off of bonding. And Mister Walsh is correct. Richard White, who was our Department of Public Works Director at the time. Uh, he said, here's my plan. And we probably complied with it one year, or the administration complied with it one year. So, um. I agree with Mister Walsh. You know, we, we had this company come and do the plan. I I like the plan. But, you know, they're, they're basically working on an assumption that we can spend as much money. What, you know, in this given timeframe, and that's, that's just not, that's just not true, right? So to take this study and and it says, here's how you should do it. Agree one hundred percent. Here's how many miles you should do, right? But how you pay for it? I'm sorry, that's a, that's a administration and a Board of Finance call. And frankly, spending the four million dollars over the year like Mister Walsh said, and then paying the interest on ten million dollars. I, 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 I can't support it either. I I just can't. So I think we can baseline a plan. That will get us to the numbers Mister Walsh said, and I think. I think that that will be more than acceptable. And I'll tell you another thing. I remember the twenty eleven observations about our town and the paving. And our roads were in a lot worse shape. I mean, a lot worse. I was really surprised when I heard a gentleman speak about how, how, how good he thought our roads were. You know, so relatively speaking, I think we're, he, he gave us a. He kinda gave us a B minus. I thought we were gonna be like a C or a D. Cause that's where we were when, when Rich White gave us the last presentation. C, D at the best, we were barely, we were barely, you know, passing. So. That's, that's my comments and that's a little. History for, for those who might not have wanted it anyway.
No, that's, that's great. Thank you. Um, thank you, thank you, Mister Dewett. Uh, Mister Curly?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, and and thank you uh, to both Jim and Chris for sharing some of the history. Uh, on this topic, because I recognize I am new to the board. Um, and I have a lot of respect for uh, this board and and the members of the board that preceded um, me. Um, and I remember the discussions uh, from two thousand nine and and weaning off uh, paving. I. Remember uh, the debate that this board went through at the time. Um, and I agree with it. I I, I think if, despite the fact that if a road is paved and done properly, it'll last twenty years. Um. The, the fact of the matter is the town will have. Regular recurring uh, expenses that they have to go through at about a twenty-year cycle. And then they're gonna have to get, uh, start over again. It's the, it's the equivalent of. Painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You get to the end and you have to go back to the beginning and start over again. Um, so. I understand uh, and agree with uh, Jim's point as well that um, you know, if the town's fallen behind. Um, maybe we could consider um. Making some type of um, concession or from our policy or or practice that we followed. Uh, for a catch-up item. But I, I agree with what Chris just said too. I went back to my notes and and reviewed it and I remember when. The, the roadway capital improvement plan was presented, the gentleman who presented did say that our. Our roads were above average. Um, I think it was like an eighty-six something score or whatever, so solid, maybe not a B minus, maybe a B. Um, but he said above average and and uh, I did go back and look at the, the uh. Historical spending, um, and it does look like starting in about two thousand eighteen, that there were some. Ratcheting down of numbers on paving. I think that's low-hanging fruit as, as um, as the budget process goes through. So I understand that perhaps we could run into a situation where we're falling behind, but I was glad to hear that the consultant said that we. We um, have above-average roads. I, I also note that um, we, this board did put two and a half million dollars of ARPA money towards uh, paving. So to me, that kinda feels like that's a half a million dollars a year, uh, going back five years equivalent. Um, so if there is the need for um, some type of catch-up, I thi- I think the ARPA money effectively covers that. So personally, I feel like a few things, um. That this, this board made a concerted effort and a conscious decision after a healthy debate. Um, to wean off of a bonding for paving. I think it, it sets a bad precedent to try and go back on that, um. Especially when this town is facing a lot of large capital projects um, in the near term. Uh, we can debate which ones are the right priority and how that money gets spent, but. I personally don't feel like this is, that, that the town has the uh, capacity to try and add. Uh, paving uh, to the, to the capitalist um, with everything else going on. Um, so uh, for me, I, I know that the plan talked about, you know, in the next five years, it would cover fifty-five miles out of two hundred and seventy-two. I, I, I applauded the effort to get this study done and 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 work with the consultant. Um, I think it's great that the town can uh, tap into a resource that allows the town to um. Determine what work needs to be done and uh, how to prioritize it to be most efficient, but I don't. I don't think that plan really does address, to Chris's point, I don't think that plan addresses how it gets paid. It's just how the work gets done and what work gets done. So I, I think the town um, and the administration has to think, give some thought as to how they wanna implement this plan. But I think how we pay for it likely has to come out of the operating budget.
Thank you, um, Mister Curly. Uh, I wanna give Mister Schmidt a chance to respond, but do any other board members have comments first that they'd like to uh. Share. Ms. Leclerc?
Oh, I, I just wanna agree with the sentiments of my colleagues that just spoke. Um, I, I. Don't approve of bonding for our roads. I did look, look for the plan and I was eager to get it because I wanted. To know what we needed to do to get our roads back on track. Um, but I think the financing um, needs to come out of our budget.
Okay. Thank you, um, Mary. Uh, other, any other board members that wanna? Way in on this? Um, Mister Walsh?
I'll, I'll be quick, Madam Chairwoman. Um, I, I, I was remiss in, in talking about this. I, I think it's, it's a great conversation. I'm really. Um, I, I can't thank the administration enough. For hiring this company and trying to get a realistic plan that we can all buy into and. Trying to get this conversation behind us once we can figure out how we're gonna finance it. Because I think it needs to be done and um, you know, one of the biggest things our, our taxpayers look at after schools. It's how our roads doing and am I going over, you know, it doesn't feel like a speed bump when I'm driving down Post Road, so. Um, you know, it's one of the fundamental things we need, we need to work on. So um, I think it's good. I. Hope the administration will work with us, but I, I, you know, as I said, I don't think we need as much bonding, but I think we do need some catch-up. To kick this thing off and, but then to stick with the program once we have it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I, I'll share my thoughts, but anyone else wanna weigh in here first? Mister Stark, do you have your hand raised? I can't tell.
No.
No, okay. Um, okay, and and I'll just, um, I wanna give Mister uh, Schmidt a chance to respond, but just to wrap up, I, I um. I, I mostly agree with uh. With my colleagues here. I, I think. Um, personally, a million dollars is a year in our operating budget is, is not enough. Um, clearly from the. Just from the history that we've seen, which includes a, a couple of uh, years that we really shorted the plan, we still. Were running at an average of over two million dollars a year of uh. Um, you know, over the past ten years, and I, I think a million dollars is um. Is too low. Um, I don't think putting it. Uh, in bonding is, is a smart thing to do. Uh, someone made the point that I think Mister Walsh will be paying principal and interest here. Interest rates are going up. Um. Another point also made by Mister Curly is that this uses up our bonding capacity. I mean, we've already talked a little, a lot. About the fact that we've got a whole lot more. On our wish list for capital projects than we can possibly afford to do. And um, you know, bonding at this level will use up a decent amount of that capacity every year, so. I don't um. You know, I, I'm not in favor of doing that. Um, and I, I just think it's like, you know, it's like crack, you know, once you start, once you start bonding paving, it is really hard to wean off it. Because that's a cliff that we have to overcome every single year. It's what we're dealing with now. Um, I appreciate the, the, the need to catch up. Um, in my view, I think the catch-up is the ARPA money. And um. I, when we had the discussion for ARPA, I, you know, made the point then that I. I didn't like devoting ARPA money, money to paving, but I. You know, I voted for it on the basis that if we were gonna do that, we needed to have. You know, get back to a normal level of paving in our operating budget. And to me, the normal level of pay, you know, the normal level of funding is, is at least two million dollars, so. Um, that's, that's just where I sit and um. Uh, you know, basically, um, I, I think maybe all of us have a little bit, you know, different level of tolerance for some bonding or no bonding, but um. You know, to be clear, I would not be in favor of, of bonding. I would be in favor of dealing with this in our operating budget and. Reserving the ARPA money for any catch-up that we need to do and. You know, to, for the rest of it, just figuring it out like we do um, with every other aspect of the budget. Um, Mister Schmidt, um, thank you for being patient. Do you wanna comment?
Sure. Yeah, so just to clarify what the, what the plan is, there, we're not saying not to put anything in the operating budget. Um, we're saying put a million doll, as of right now, put in a million dollars a year from the operating budget. Into paving plus the five hundred thousand that's, that we typically do for sidewalks and repairs. Um, and then in the first two years to use, use the ARPA money evenly in those two years. And I appreciate uh, Mister Curly's comment and your follow-up, Madam Chair, about, you know. Uh, squeezing other capital projects. And in our mind is, you're doing one or the other. You're gonna squeeze capital or you're gonna squeeze, squeeze operating. And I think what the history has shown is that. Uh, the, the boards and I, I understand why are loathe to squeeze things out of operating. And so it doesn't get funded. And it's not, it's not uncommon when you put in place policy, strict policies that don't have any kind of escape hatch. That there are unintended consequences, and I think one of the unintended consequences is. You, you are, as Mister Wa- Walsh pointed out, the administration didn't want to, for whatever reason. Um, I suspect because there were other pressures on the operating side to fund the plan at the time. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that if, if the policy of not bonding at all. Continues, that you'll probably be in the same place a number of years from now, where you'll, where somebody's gonna decide that. We don't have the money in our operating budget to fund this, and so uh, so there's gonna be catch-up paving that's gonna be needed. And, you know, the road. And, you know, the roads are going to deteriorate. And so this is, you know, so it's really, it's not that we're saying that, that everything should be, that all of it should be bonded. First, Leclerc is going to put it into her budget. And, you know, you guys can decide on how you want to vote on it. But that, you know, I just, I wanted to point that out, that there's, there's a downside to putting in the operating, and I think it's an unintended downside to putting, trying to put everything into the operating budget as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. And I'm going to wrap this up because I, it's eleven PM here. I, I think we all hear what you're saying. I'm just, you know, I'll take the opportunity to reiterate again. We don't save money by bonding things. It becomes more expensive. And we are simply moving the cost, higher cost, from one line item to the budget, of the budget to another. We don't save anything. So I will leave it at that. And I would, you know, again, just challenge us to think about this like we do every other item of the budget. You know, we always work within constraints of affordability versus what we would like to do. And, you know, I'm not sure this is different. I, you know, I thought I might, you know, it sounds like everyone has, you know, has some similar concerns, but we do have, you know, there may be some tolerance for some bonding on the part of some of us versus others. So I'm not sure it really makes sense to take a sense of the body because I don't think there's a clear cut answer we're trying to question, we're trying to, I'm sorry, a clear cut answer that we're trying to get to here. But I, I do appreciate the discussion. And I think, Mr. Schmidt, I hope you'll take that for what it's worth. And, you know, consider how the board feels about bonding as you, as you prepare the operating budget this year. I don't think we want to be in a situation where you assume a certain level of support that ultimately ends up not being there. So that was it. Any final comments before we move on? Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate, appreciate the discussion. All right. Next, let's move on to item seven to hear, consider and act upon the draft minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-one, January fourth, twenty twenty-two, and January twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Matola.
Are we putting them together separately?
I was going to do these together. I don't, I think we were all here for all of these meetings.
Madam Chairwoman, it's impossible to put them all together because on your December seventh meeting, we have some tabled minutes that are still lying on the table. Pursuant to Robert's rules.
Okay, I thought we had, okay, so I'll be happy to do those separately. I thought we had some amended minutes provided to us that we could vote on with the others. But if we want to vote on, if we need to vote on those minutes separately, we can do that. So I'll ask again, should, can I have a motion to put those meeting, to put those, sorry, the minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-one on the table?
I make a motion.
Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Stark.
What's the, procedurally, I mean, we need to follow Robert's rules. So what's, what is the motion?
The motion is to put on the table for approval the amended minutes that have been provided to the board from the meeting of December seventh.
I would like to talk about procedurally, since we do follow Robert's rules, what is going on with that?
Okay.
First, so on, on, on January fourth, we went to go vote on the December seventh minutes. Ms. Charlton made a motion to lay on the table.
Ms. Marmian, I believe.
I mean, Ms. Marmian, I'm sorry, excuse me. Ms. Marmian made a motion to lay those on the table. That was her motion, and it passed. Okay? She probably shouldn't have made that motion for a number of reasons. Number one, to lay something on the table is not, was not the proper motion, but it was her motion.
Right. The motion would have been to postpone.
Yes.
And here we are. Okay.
And here we are. And pursuant to Robert's rules, that had to be, something needed to be done with those, taken off the table by our next regularly scheduled meeting, which was on January twelfth. And that did not happen. So when that doesn't happen, that dies. It doesn't come off the table. Just dies. So they, we can't vote on that then tonight. Pursuant to Robert's rules, I'll read it to you if you want on table. I'm looking at the tenth edition of Robert's rules, which I believe is the most current. But it states, if not taken up by the, by that time, meaning the next scheduled meeting, the question dies. And that's the problem with table. It should have been a motion to postpone. So we can't amend those minutes. Pursuant to Robert's rules.
Okay. Any, any reason why, I'm sorry, Mr. Curly, you have a?
Yeah, I understand the difference between a postpone and table. And I also agree that we follow Robert's rules and we should and we, and we need to. I guess my question back to you, Jim, is we don't have approved minutes. So while the motion to table dies, the minutes need to be, still need to be acted upon. So we have a set of minutes in front of us. I, I, I don't know.
We have, we have, we have minutes that we can act.
Minutes we have in front of us were amended incorrectly.
Okay. But I do believe that, I do believe that Ms. Marmian, as Secretary to the, this board, has the ability to review the recording secretary's minutes before they get presented to the, this board for consideration. And what's transpired over, since this meeting is, I do believe that the recording secretary and the secretary met. The minutes were edited and they put, been put forth to this board for consideration.
Oh, they just, they, I think that we, I don't even know whether we fully made the motion. They're still on the table unless we've had a motion to remove them from the table, which I don't think we've had and voted on. So the minutes are still sitting, sitting on the table.
Well, that seems consistent with what you just said, though, Jim. What you just said a moment ago is that, that because no action was taken, that those minutes died.
Yeah, actually, you're right. It died. It died.
So we have a set of.
I don't know whether we have the right to take action tonight. And I think it should be just referred to the town attorney to make a decision about it.
We certainly want to follow proper procedure. But I do, I do note that the recording secretary and the secretary do have the ability to confer and make edits to a draft set of minutes before they're put forward for consideration.
Craig, they were.
But they, she didn't do that. That was the problem.
Exactly.
Well, I think the point, I think the point that she made last, at that meeting, was that she did not have a chance to provide her edits to the recording secretary and she wanted the time to, the opportunity to be able to do that. And now she's done that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Matola, did you have your hand up? I couldn't tell. Go ahead.
What I would say is, let's just, let's give this to the town attorney for some guidance. We're going to go around in circles on this. And let's approve the January fourth minutes and the January twelfth minutes. That would be my recommendation.
That's fine by me.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the January twelfth minutes, but. So I would go into the town attorney.
Before we do that, I'm sorry, Mr. DeWitt, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have, I have a quick question. So I never made a motion because Ms. Marmian had made a motion, but I actually, there was something missing from those meeting minutes that I wanted added that appeared to have been added in the revision that we're not going to take up with tonight. Should, should we wait till the town attorney for me to address those comments? Back to the recording secretary now?
Are you saying, I'm sorry, Mr. DeWitt, are you saying that you have comments on the revision?
No, no, no. I had, I had comments on the original meeting minutes.
Understood.
Which appear to have been rectified in, in the revision, but we're not taking up the revision anymore. So I just want to be sure that the next time these come before us, my comments are made, are added as they were, as they are in the revision in the correct way.
Understood.
Ms. Charlton, whose revision is this? Is it Ms. Marmian's revision? Whose revision is this? That's, that's the question.
Sure. So I can answer that. And I think the revision was made by the recording secretary. Ms. Marmian didn't, Ms. Marmian raised the question during her last meeting or raised.
It was her question, not, not the, not the board's question, her question.
She as secretary, she raised, and as a board member, raised the issue or raised comments regarding the meeting minutes because she felt that they were incomplete in the, in respect that they didn't discuss, that they didn't reflect the discussion we had had. She, my understanding is the recording secretary re-reviewed the tape of the meeting and she added in some very brief, a very brief summary of what the comments.
That was okay with Ms. Marmian, right? So she's deciding what the board votes on now? Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Ms. Marmian did review, sorry, Mr. Curly, did you want to jump in here?
Yeah, I would, it's just a matter of procedure. I mean, it, it is common practice in every committee, every board, that a recording secretary should provide.
Not a tabled motion. It was a tabled motion, Craig. We shouldn't have even discussed the table initially.
I'm not talking about this issue specifically. I'm talking about generally, procedures are that a recording secretary would provide draft minutes to the secretary. And that secretary would have an interaction with the recording secretary so that what's presented to this board or any board or any commission.
That was not the case here.
I agree.
And to get to Mr., I agree with Mr. Walsh's point. I think we should vote to dissolve the, this motion because, to table because it becomes mute from, Mr. Walsh just read it. I understand we want to consult with the town attorney, but at the same time, we've already got an opinion rendered by Robert's rules of order. So I'm not sure what else the town attorney would add beyond that.
Any other comments?
This is Prue. Can I make a comment?
Sure. Thank you, Prue.
Thank you. So Ms. Marmian sent me an email the first week of January because I was home with COVID. So it was the first week of January. She, she sent me an email and asked me, this was after she had tabled the minutes. And she asked me how I go about doing the minutes. And that she, anyway, she asked me the procedure of how I go about doing the minutes. So I replied to her how I do the minutes. And then she replied back, I guess a week later, and she said that she was going to listen to the recording and do her edits. And so I asked her if I could, when she did her edits, if she wouldn't mind sending them to me so that I could keep a copy also. And I just got them yesterday with, with whoever else, you know. I guess she sent them to, to you and me and Jen. And I'm not sure who else because I haven't seen the, I don't have the email in front of me.
Okay, thank you, Prue. I, and so I apologize for my error. I thought that you had made the edits based on reviewing the tape of the meeting. So I was wrong about that. And unfortunately, Ms. Marmian is not feeling well tonight, so she had to drop off the meeting earlier. So thank you for clarifying. I appreciate.
Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, I appreciate you jumping in because I didn't have that right. So in any event, I'm going to, I'm going to, sorry, Mr. Walsh.
Yes, that kind of changes what Prue just said to me. I mean, Ms. Marmian prepared these paragraphs that were then put in. So it was her determination.
Exactly my point.
Determination of what she wanted in because when we asked to do this and we can go back and listen to the tape, it was, we were going to ask the, Prue, Brian, to add some more specificity. That's what it was supposed to be. It wasn't supposed to be that Ms. Marmian was supposed to put in what she wanted to put in the minutes.
And that's exactly what happened.
All right. Does anybody, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to move on. But does, do you, do you guys have a particular objection to the edits in the minute? They seemed, and I'm asking this sincerely, because they seem very benign to me. And we're spending a lot of time on this and I don't want to disrespect the procedural process here. I will certainly reach out to Mr. Baldwin. I'm going to do that as both Mr. Walsh and Mr. Matola suggested so that we can get this settled once and for all. But, you know, I don't like the implication that something nefarious is going on. There's a very brief paragraph that said, we talked about Cool Manor. Process should be better in the future. Included Mr. DeWitt's comments that we should have the fourteen points as a follow up item in the future. And that was it. I mean, that's what we're talking about here. So if there is, if, if there's concern that Ms. Marmian, you know, wrote something in the minutes or provided comments on the minutes, which I think she has every right to do, please just state it plainly. I didn't, again, I think if they're very benign and if that's an issue, aside from the procedural issue, let's just put it out there. Is there?
It's an issue, it's an issue, it's an issue for me. It's an issue for me, and I've told you all this before. Robert's rule says what should be contained in the minutes. I know we've gone past that and we now put other things, not just votes, not just motions, whatever. But as far as I know, unless someone has something factually wrong, no one's made motions in the past of this board of finance regarding the minutes. We let whoever the recording secretary is create the minutes. Now, I understand, and Mr. Curly is correct, that the secretary can go back. But those catches are supposed to be not for substance. They're supposed to be if something's wrong, if somebody wasn't there at the meeting, but she's listing them as being there. But now we're getting into what Ms. Marmian wants to be in the minutes. And that's a little different. And I don't think that's proper. So that's my problem with it. And I just think that we should stick with the, if we should stick with the minutes as they were presented originally. I don't think, you know, the additional stuff really adds anything. There were plenty of things that I said at that meeting regarding Mr. Tetro and his administration and what happened down at Cool Manor. None of that was in the minutes. And I'm not complaining, and I'm not complaining about it.
I, I hear you. We had this discussion already. And we debated this during that meeting when the motion was made to reconsider and amend the minutes. The motion to table was not correct. It should have been a motion to postpone. No one said anything at the time. No one pointed this out. So we have a procedural error. And let's figure out the best way to move on so that we're not spending hours on this and we can do something that's more worthwhile. I will speak to Mr. Baldwin and see if there's another option. And we'll figure out a way to move on, if that's okay with everyone. Again, I appreciate everyone's comments. But, you know, what, what Ms. Marmian, we had the discussion and what Ms. Marmian suggested, and the reason she asked for an amendment is she felt that an entire discussion on a substantive issue was missing from the minutes and she wanted some reference to that. Personally, I don't object to that. I understand that others do. So I will, I will send a note and ask. Personally, I don't object to that. I, I understand that others do. So I will, I will send a note and ask the town attorney the best way to go forward, and if he agrees with what Mr. Testani and Mr. Walsh have suggested, then we'll move on. I have no personal stake in this. So with that, I am going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes for January 4th, 2022, and January 12th, 2022. Can I have a motion for those minutes, Mr. Walsh? Yes?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion just to get it before us, but I would like to talk about the January 4th minutes for the same reasons you just spoke about.
Okay.
There's a whole area of discussion that was not mentioned in that.
Gotcha.
Let's talk, let's talk about that. So
So you're making a motion to put this before us, Mr. Curly?
Yes, for discussion.
All right, the item is before us, and Prue, you're on the line here. So, Mr. Walsh, you had comments on those minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, it's in January 4th minutes under number five. And this is the discussion where Ms. Marmian makes the motion to table the minutes. In it, I'll read this back to you. It says, about halfway down number five, "Ms. Marmian made a motion to table the minutes of December 7th, 2021, 7:00 PM meeting, so Recording Secretary Prue O'Brien can listen to the recording and add comments regarding the Gould Manor project to reflect the detailed discussion regarding the request for extra funding." Craig Curly seconded the motion. Number one, it was supposed to be for Prue to do. Nothing said that Ms. Marmie would supply the language. Number two, that's all it says. We had about a 25 to 30-minute conversation where my, where I brought up the issues and the problems with what she, what Ms. Marmie was attempting to do. There is not one mention of that in those minutes. That went on, I think, I, I think there are others talked about it as well. But if you read those minutes, it's like it never happened, like there was no problem. Nobody had a problem with it. I talked for about 20 to 25 minutes on how if you really want to have verbatim minutes, we can have them all typed up if you want, but really, go to, go to Fair TV. You really want to know what happened at the meeting? Like, you need to get that involved in it? Go to Fair TV.
Okay, and Mr. Walsh, I, I think
It's not there.
I, I, I understand. It's not there. I think the vote is there in which several people voted against the motion. Are you making, are you suggesting, are you making a motion that we amend those minutes to include your discussion?
Here's what I'm willing to do. You can talk to Attorney Baldwin about the first thing, as you said. If his position is that Ms. Marmian's minutes or additions are gonna go in, I want the minutes redone for January 4th with the full discussion of what happened that night.
Okay, so since I can't discuss this with Mr. Baldwin right now, are you making a motion to postpone?
I'm making a motion to postpone this to a date certain, that being our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I don't know if we have one in March, because we have all the budget
February 22nd is our quarterly review.
So why don't we do it for February 22nd, so we can try to get this behind us?
Sorry.
Okay, so
Thank you for that date, Mr. DeWitt.
You are making a motion, again, can you just, again,
I'm making a motion to postpone this to a date certain, that being February 22nd, the date of our quarterly meeting.
Okay, second, is that Mr. Testani?
Yeah, I, I do want a second. I just want to point out to echo Mr. Walsh's point. I made many comments during that discussion as well that are not reflected in those minutes. Mostly, and I don't happen to have Robert's rules, but I did stipulate, I believe, that once the motion was tabled, it's not up for discussion, is my understanding of Robert's rules. I believe I said that in the, in that meeting, and unfortunately, that wasn't followed. So I know that was part of the discussion, but none of that was in the minutes either. So as Mr. Walsh indicated, if we're gonna start getting into the weeds of exactly what everyone said for every second, that needs to be reviewed as well. So I'm seconding his motion, but I'm explaining why.
All right, you second the motion. Those all in favor of Mr. Walsh's motion to postpone the approval of, or the consideration of these minutes to
January 4th only?
January 4th. January 4th to a date certain, which I believe we said is our next meeting on February 22nd or 24th? February
22nd.
February 22nd.
22nd, yeah.
All in favor? Mr. Walsh, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Testani, Mr. Curly, Mr. Stark, Ms. LeClaire, Mr. Matola, Ms. Charlton in favor. Ms. Marmian is not here. All right, so the motion passes. All right. So I will move on. Can I have a motion to consider the meetings from Jan, I'm sorry, the, the meeting minutes from January 12th, 2022? Mr. DeWitt?
Second.
Walsh, seconded by Mr. Walsh. Okay, this is on the table. Does anyone have comments about the minutes, about these minutes? Okay, no comments. All in favor of, sorry, I'm losing my dates here, all in favor of approving the minutes from January 12th, 2022? All right, Mr. Walsh, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Testani, Mr. Curly, Mr. Matola, Mr. Stark, Ms. LeClaire, Ms. Charlton. Ms. Marmian not present. All right. Okay, moving on to item eight. To hear, consider, and act on any communications. We voted earlier to move up the discussion, the bullet point under there from the town attorney. The next bullet point that I know of in terms of communications, unless any others are requested, are updates from the audit, purchasing, and senior and disabled tax relief committees. All right, I'll just quickly kick this off and talk about the audit committee. Just want to let the board know that we had an audit subcommittee meeting at 6:00 PM this evening prior to this meeting, and we elected officers, and I will congratulate our colleague Mary LeClaire on being elected Chair of the Subcommittee, and I will turn it over to her to provide an update.
Good evening, everyone. So audit committee met briefly tonight at 6 o'clock to, to review an RFP for the audit for our next fiscal year. Typically, we have a five-year contract, which with Joe Sintifanti and I, his firm changed names several times, PKR O'Connell. And we, although we're happy with Joe's services, we just think it's a good procedure to put it out to bid, to see who's out there and what's available. And I've been on the audit committee for quite some time now. The last time we put it out to bid, we only had two people who responded. Before that, we, we had, I, I think it was maybe five or six people respond in a prior bid. So we're, we're open to hear everyone, and the process will be that we're gonna try to have the RFP ready in about a week, so it can go out, so we're able to select an auditor probably early April, and then we have to tell the state in our May meeting who will be our auditor. So does anyone have any questions? Okay, that's it for the update then.
All right, thank you, Ms. LeClaire. Mr. DeWitt, do you want to provide an update on the purchasing and senior and disabled tax relief committees?
Sure, and I'll even give you an update on budget too.
All right.
So the Purchasing Policy Committee, we are meeting with the administration and Mr. Sintifanti on the 9th of February. That'll be the next, that'll be the first meeting we've had all together to discuss the changes Mr. Sintifanti had provided and, and the, and the changes that Mr. Foley is, is proposing. We haven't seen those yet. Once we get past that, then we're gonna, then we'll take it to the Board of, sorry, we'll take it to Central, Central Office for the, for the Board of Education. So that's the purchasing policy. Senior and disabled tax relief, we are, we are meeting in person, actually. Mr. Curly and Ms. Marmian and I spoke today. We're gonna meet in person. We haven't locked down a date. It looks like the 10th or 11th of February. I have to, Mr. Curly has given me his availability. I just need to talk to Ms. Marmian and get everything locked down. But the goal there is have an update, and, oh, and I've received all of the information from the tax, tax collector, tax assessor on, on all of the senior and disabled tax relief numbers from 2021, so we can have a full briefing of what happened. We implemented the policies, what were the, what were the results? And my goal is to come before this board on the 22nd with a recommendation from our committee to, whether to convene the full committee with the RTM or, or not. So that, that is a goal. We'll see if that works out. And Budget Committee, probably next week, I'll start speaking to Ms. Carpenter about getting the individual dates locked down for the budget. I have not called an official Budget Committee meeting yet. I guess I should probably do that, but we, we could have a, I guess I should probably call an organizational meeting, and, and I can, I can do that in the next two weeks as well. So that's it.
All right, thank you for Mr. DeWitt. Any, any questions? All right. Mr. Schmidt, any other communications? On your end?
No, no other communications.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to item nine. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Curly, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. All in favor? Aye. All right, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, all.
Thank you. Good night.